It is Monday, August 12th, 2019, and the time is second by Jeff. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We now have an opportunity for public comment. This is a chance for anyone residing in the Northfield Public School District to address the board. Is there anyone here who wishes to address the board? Seeing no one come forward, we'll move on to announcements and recommendations. Dr. Hillman?
Yes, I just have a couple of this evening. This one first is from Community Services. Forty-three incoming 7th grade students had a successful trip to Eagle Bluff, July 24th through the 26th. While at Eagle Bluff, the Northfield students won two awards. The Eagle Bluff Environmental Learning Center Eagle Eye Award for Excellence in Conserving Our Natural Resources, and the Golden Clean Plate Award for Excellence in Minimizing Dining Hall Food Waste. Community Services thanks the following district staff and parent chaperones for assisting on the trip. Northfield School District staff included Chris O'Neil and Paula Bargary. Volunteer chaperones included Michael O'Keefe, Nada Dacken, Mara Sogren, and Annie Hauskins. So we want to thank again Community Services for organizing another successful trip to Eagle Bluff, a great experience for our rising 7th graders, and of course to those parents and staff members who went along to make it possible. Fall sports practices started today, and so when we have fall sports practices begin, that means that the Fall Parent Athletic Meeting is just around the corner, and that is this Thursday, August 15th, at 6:00 PM in the high school gym. And those are your announcements for this evening.
Excellent, thank you. Is there anything anyone would like to add? Okay. Let's, we will move on now to items for discussion and reports. We're pleased to have Sal Bagley from World Architects and Josh Cooper from Knutson Construction to present updates on the construction projects. So, welcome.
Good evening, board members. I'm going to have Josh help me hand out the Sibley DVD book while I get going here. Thank you again for having us. We've got some exciting things to report. So Josh and I'll kind of tag-team this a little bit. So what we're going to do is we're going to go over an update for Greenville Park Elementary. Lots has been happening on that project. So we'll kind of remind you where the design ended up at the end of the design phase, and we'll talk about how the bidding phase went. And I know later in your agenda, there is a motion to approve the bids that were received last week, so we'll get to that. And then we're also going to give you an update on Sibley Elementary School, so that has been under design and having user groups as of late. And then it's not on this agenda, but we're also going to give a brief update about Bridgewater's construction and how that's going. Will you stand up here with me? Solidarity, maybe?
Make sure in the video draft.
Yes. So just to remind people about how the design process has been set up, really, all projects go through all of these phases, and so for schematic design is really getting the pieces in the right locations and the appropriate adjacencies. That's the core planning groups you've been seeing updates from. Design development is when we move from 2D to 3D, and we start picking finishes and making sure we get all the functions right, as well as layering in all of the engineering coordination. And then we move into the construction document phases in which we prepare the technical drawings for contractors to bid off of and build off of. And so we have just passed that point for Greenville Park. We actually just received bids last Monday, and we'll talk a little bit about that. Spoiler alert, it went pretty well, so we're happy to present those. And then we are in the late design development phase for Sibley Elementary School, and obviously Bridgewater is in construction. So I wanted to give a brief overview of Greenville Park and spend a moment talking about the site plan. That has been something that's been in significant progress all throughout the design phase as we work with the city, another important neighborhood element. So on here, you can see the existing buildings on the left-hand side of this image, and the proposed new Greenville Park is on the right-hand side, labeled "New Building." Couple of things you can see on here, Lincoln Parkway at the very bottom of the image, and then the meandering path is that creek or drainage ditch that's on the north side of the district's property. So just to the south of the new building is the new staff and visitor parking lot for new Greenville Park, and then there is a parent drop-off loop all around that parking lot to provide maximum queuing spaces, sometimes called that airport-style, where there's a place to pull off and drop off, and then you can get out of the line if you want to. So there's two lanes, and about 100 parking stalls in that south parking lot. And then the parking lot that is, will be between the two buildings will be used for two purposes. It'll be used for the bus drop-off for new Greenville Park, and that is the angled parking along the right-hand curb side, as well as staff parking for the existing Greenville, which will support new functions, new district functions around preschool and other early childhood and community ed programs. So there are some minor proposals to modify that parking lot. It's really flipping its function 180 degrees from what it is today, so the buses line up along the left-hand curb right now. That'll be on the right-hand curb after some restriping. And then we did remove, after lots of discussion with the city, did remove a curb cut along Lincoln Parkway, because there was really quite a few in just a small stretch of road. So in looking at the, and then you can see some proposed landscaping as well. So this has been a significant collaboration with the city, and we do have conditional approval on this site plan. We're just working through some final verbiage and a couple minor tweaks. Just to remind everybody, or for those who may not be familiar, of the floor plan of new Greenville Park. So the building is really divided up into more public areas, separate from the learning areas. So the more public areas are on the left-hand side for the gymnasium and cafeteria, or things that might be used on nights and weekends frequently, as well as several ways to lock down the building, both for security and just the various events you might have. So you can see the classrooms organized around breakout areas, three grades proposed to be on the first floor, and three grades on the upper floor, as well as other things like band, your special services suite, and the media center just towards the top center of this floor plan. Stacking as many things as possible on the second floor that makes sense programmatically due to conserving green space on the site. So your 3rd, 4th, and 5th grade propose to be on the second floor, along with the flexible labs, music, and the art room. And obviously, the gymnasium and cafeteria are tall spaces, so you can see they show up on this floor plan as well. So to go to some computer renderings of what the building will look like about this time next year, when construction is completed. So here is a view of the exterior overall. Those classroom wings are on the right-hand side. Kind of middle of the image, where the lighter brick is shown, is the main entry. We'll see that in another image here. And then to the left of that main entry is the main office complex, and then the light volume on the very left-hand side is the cafeteria. Images of the proposed exterior materials are at the bottom of every slide. This is a view in which you can see in more clear focus, or maybe in the center of the image, is the cafeteria volume there, with very particular selections of glass after reviewing that with first responders, and having a little bit taller space there, because that'll be a gathering space as well. So we are inside the bus loop in this view, the current parking lot to the east of Greenville Park. This is a little bit closer view of the main entrance, or what you might see from the parent drop-off loop is you're pulling up on that curb. So the one-story volume to the left is the main office complex, which has a secure vestibule attached to it, so people check in before entering into the building. And then the taller volume on the left-hand side is all of the classrooms. In particular, you're seeing the two music and band rooms that is on one floor and then This is a view of the classroom pod areas, so you can see there's one on the left-hand side and one on the right, and it's really a collection of classrooms around a resource area that's got some ability to support personalized learning and breakout. And there are two that are identical stacked directly on top of each other, only minor changes in cabinet design or perhaps accent color. And our last exterior view is of the, it is of the north side of the building, but we are looking south in this image. So the lighter volume in the center of this is your media center with the flexible labs on the upper right-hand side, or second story, looking down into it. And then on the very right-hand side of this image, you can see the new gymnasium that'll be constructed of precast concrete. Just quickly going over some interiors, as I know you've seen these before, a proposed view of the inside of the cafeteria. So those windows you saw in the exterior images are on the right-hand side here. And then showing your table layout, designed to accommodate the capacity as discussed, as well as a presentation wall at the back. Looking the other way in the cafeteria, back towards the serveri, some inspiration from the community school programming of calling the serveri the buen provecho. We came the first time with bon appétit, which was the wrong answer. And working through some of the interior materials, so I think when we came to you before, that was a work in progress, but we've had some follow-up meetings with that committee, so the final proposed materials are shown in the smaller images at the bottom. So we have just passed through the first major lockdown line inside the building here, and we're looking at the entrance to the media center in that main hallway. So the staircase to the second floor, one of the staircases, I should say, to the second floor is seen on the right-hand side, and this is really the opening to the media center, which has a flexible learning area and a presentation space with the stacks and collection and media desk beyond. Just inside the media center with all of those windows you saw in the exterior view. And lastly, looking back at the support desk and a small reading within the media center with the windows that you see at the top of the image are the flex labs that look down into the media center. Then just a couple views of our classroom areas. So here's the view inside one of the breakout areas. The geometric colored shapes on the right-hand side are actually a large tack wall that work can be pinned up on or sharing student projects. And then entrance to a classroom is seen with the door that's straight ahead. Another view of that, so you can see the classroom doors themselves are highlighted with an accent color, and some other colors shown on the ceiling to be reflective of the sky, which is really part of the inspiration of the building, is to be inspired by the nature around Northfield in particular. And lastly, a view looking back at another projection wall within one of the student breakout areas. So I won't take all of Jeff's points here, but we did, so the project was, I think the drawings were on the streets the Monday after we completed. So we finished drawings on Friday, July 12th, and the following Monday, they were available on public plan rooms for bidders to look at. And we did have a public bid opening last Monday, August 5th, so I'll let Josh cover that a little bit.
Yeah. So we, like it shows up here, we got about 102 bids, which is great, great coverage over 37 packages. We'll kind of touch on what we were asking your approval here in a little bit, but 35 are ready for award. And again, we had another five, I believe, five that were actually local, so not proportionally the most as Bridgewater, as many as Bridgewater, but a great turnout. We had 12 mechanical bids that were within like 5%, 6% of each other, which is great. And then roofing, drywall, and steel reectors, they all were plus six, I think, on most of them. So it was a great turnout, and you know, we'll ask here, we'll touch on here a little bit, but it was a good number, we're very happy with them.
Just to remind everybody of the construction timeline, so with your approval of bids tonight, those activities would begin very soon, as we can get a permit from the state. It's going through plan review and plumbing review right now, and be under construction for just about a year, proposed to be open in about this time next year.
Be good if it could be open about a week before tonight.
That would be good. Any questions on Greenville Park? I know we went through that pretty quickly.
Board members, any specific opinions?
Thank you for coming tonight.
Yes.
This is really, really exciting, and to see all of these pictures is just really fun to see how the creativity is all coming together. And I do have a few questions, not very many. And so I was just wondering if you could talk a little bit about how you've incorporated soundproofing, and also how you chose materials for, you know, environmentally, you know, because I know those were things that we had talked about before, and how did that end up coming together?
Sure. So I'll probably take those questions one at a time, might go back to a view that would be a good demonstration. So I'll talk about acoustics first. So one thing, at the very beginning of the design process, we start talking about adjacencies and what things shouldn't, shouldn't be next to each other. And one of the conversations we have at the core group is loud spaces versus quiet spaces. So I think even just starting with the initial building layout, that's an important thing, but obviously, there's lots to happen after that. So there's a few things we propose that all of the walls be built up to the roof deck and have insulation within the walls themselves, so that's really important. You can see in most of these views, in this view in particular, there's an acoustical ceiling, so that's the ceiling tiles, as people sometimes call them, those are important, as well as consideration with the material on the floor, so really wanting to have absorptive surfaces. And then in some of our taller spaces, I picked this image in particular, you can see that we've proposed some acoustic panels on the wall. Those are those colored squares or rectangles on the right-hand side there. As large spaces can have reverberation issues, so it's really a balancing act between how much hard surface and the volume, as well as the construction. So I hope that answered your acoustics question.
Yes, gave me an idea of what you're looking at, and I could see some of it in the diagram too, and I was just wondering, I wanted to hear what you had to say.
Sure.
That's the acoustic side. What about sort of environmental materials and planning for, you know, good heating, environmentally sound, you know, future for the building?
Sure. So I'll probably talk about both finishes as well as systems. So for finishes, we had an ongoing process with Jim and his team about, I'll talk about longevity of materials, as I think that's an often-not-talked-about element of sustainability, is how frequently you have to replace something. So things need to last a long time for them to actually achieve the marketing campaign that many products have. So initially, talk about that as making sure things are long-lasting. So in some areas, in particular, you'll see recommendation of terrazzo for the flooring and the cafeteria due to its longevity. We did go product by product, actually, with the, I'll say Buildings and Grounds Team, through the whole specification and talked about important characteristics of those. So there's low VOC requirements for painting and flooring, as well as some of the adhesives. Other things are about the system, so we talked about having energy-efficient systems, so you're going to have high-efficiency condensing boilers. Many of the mechanical units have heat recovery wheels, so it allows the fresh air to actually be preheated by the heat that's already in the air that you're expelling, so it allows the transfer of heat without the mixing of the two air. So some of those things are really important for energy efficiency for your long-term vision, so I'm trying to think of other, yes, LED lighting, that's kind of a standard on all of our buildings, but that's a major change in the school world in the past several years. And even having, we even talked about having mechanical units inside the building as it increases the life durability of the units themselves, because having to replace major systems is inherently not very sustainable as well. So, other things, talked about the landscaping plan at length with the city planning department and community development director on making sure we're going as far as we can to meet the city's long-term goals in terms of sustainability, and how we treat stormwater on the site. So that's that, probably won't scroll all the way back to it, but that, what looks like a pretty large stormwater management pond, because we want to make sure we're not impacting the city's water system.
Great. All right. So I have two more questions.
Okay.
One is, I was wondering if you had a view of a sample classroom?
Oh. That is a great question. I don't think I have it in this presentation. I thought maybe you could see it through one of these resource area. I'd be happy to get you a sample view of a classroom.
Because I'd love to see one in general, but one of the questions I had with that is, how big is the window in each classroom? It's kind of hard to tell from the outside.
Sure. So if I go to an exterior view, I think I can probably speak to that. So each one of these windows is about eight feet wide and a little more than eight feet tall, so that in relation to, that would be four ceiling tiles wide by four ceiling tiles tall. So that's the window to the outside, and then about half of the size of that is the size of the window from the inside of the room to the resource area. So that's about six feet by, I think, about four feet. So not quite as big, because we were starting to run out of space for tack boards and cabinets, but...
It sounds lovely, yeah. I just was wondering how...
Quite a bit bigger than what they have at Greenville Park.
Which is nice. They're going to have a lot of, a lot of nice natural lighting all over, so that's very exciting as well.
Yes.
And then for the very early picture, you had, on the first floor plan at the far left, where are those rooms? Are they all part of the kitchen, or are they part of maintenance, or are they part of...
The rooms that are around the space that says receiving?
Yes.
Yes. So the one just to the north of the word receiving is actually the main mechanical room. So there are no air handlers in that room, but that's where the boilers are, the main electrical service comes in, water softener, water heater. So that's that room. There's an outdoor storage room, which is right to the left of that. Continuing even further left is the head engineer's office, and then there's obviously some storage needs in the receiving, and they have some equipment, snow removal and lawn mowing, things like that. And then just south of that, there's a pretty thick black line, we get into the kitchen and serveri. So there's a freezer, a cooler, a dry storage room, a food service office, as well as a dedicated custodial office for the kitchen, because they don't like to share with the rest of the building, which makes a lot of sense.
Okay. All right. And my last question is, you piqued my curiosity when you said you talked to the first responders and had them review the white outside, and I was wondering about that conversation. Why, what were they thinking?
Good question. So I can't remember his last name, Monty, the police chief.
Chief Monty Nelson was our primary contact. He, we spent...
Several hours.
Yeah, I was going to say a few hours going through the plans with him, and specifically looking at some sightlines and some of the materials, and specifically the cafeteria, to make sure that we could achieve the appropriate balance of having safety, you know, with having the ability to continue to have that natural light that we have all really valued. So we spent several hours with Monty, and you want to describe the, because it's a layered approach to how we're looking at the security of the windows.
Sure. So there are actually three types of glass to be proposed in this cafeteria, so the bottom layer is both mirrored, as well as has some impact resistance, so a film. And then above that, I mean, that's to about door height. And then the band above that is mirrored, but not impact resistant, because that'd be above your average person. And then it's just clear glazing above that. So we talked about levels of security needed, and I think he has a really practical view of how the district should spend their dollars, because they even had to make choices at their own facilities. And then another thing that he felt very strongly about was the glass not going all the way to the ground. So to have that masonry base, so it's a brick with wall behind it base, just to have some level of protection from any threats from the outside. So in our original designs, we actually did have glass going further down, and that was a conversation with him that was informed.
About four feet, right, am I remembering?
Yep, yep, just under four feet, yep. And so we did that, and for that space in particular, because it's right at the main entry and very accessible by a parking lot, but we did go through the whole floor plan with him, and even down to where card readers are and things like that, so...
Well, again, I'm very excited about this project, and thank you for all your excellent work, both of you, that you're putting into it, and I'm really eager to see how it progresses.
Thank you. We are very excited as well, and we couldn't thank all of those who have been involved in the design enough, the core group, the many, many people who are reached out to during user groups, as well as other feedback that was gathered, so first responders, teachers, staff, and even the conversations we've been having with your city planning department have all been very fruitful, so we're excited.
Excellent questions. Greenville, specific Ellen.
Sure. So I have two questions. One is specific to Greenville, and one is kind of could go for both.
Okay.
So the one that's specific to Greenville, and they both deal with sort of student safety. I'm interested, this is the first time we've seen a real detailed kind of the site plan after you've worked with the city.
Oh, sure.
And tell me a little bit about the exit from play entry to playground. I must not be reading it right, because it looks like the students might have to pass through parking lot space to get to recess space, or...
Sure. I don't think I have a good tool for gesturing up here, so I'm going to paint...
Bruce, is there a laser pointer?
Yep.
Look at that. So the building right here, and the plan is to have, well, there's multiple ways people could get to play, but the idea is to come out of this door, and this is not actually parking back here, it's hard surface play, but it does serve a dual purpose, so it is designed so that a fire truck could get to the back of the building, so it's emergency responder access or an ambulance if somebody got hurt in the gym. But it would be, have a barricade essentially, so that cars could not move past that area, unless they were, you know, a gate of some kind. So they would be on blacktop, but it's not a parking area. Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
Perfect.
And then my second question is, thinking about both of them under construction, and at Greenville, we have children at the existing building, and then at Sibley, you're going to have students right in the building. So thinking about what are, I'm sure you both have thought about what, you've done this again and again, how do you keep students safe and in a productive learning environment during construction?
Sure. So certainly welcome Josh's thoughts. We do have actually detailed phasing and staging plans that the contractors have to abide to, so that's actually one of the drawings in our set that shows them kind of where they're going to be allowed to have access to and have purview over, where they can have storage and vehicles, because we know school has to operate. So obviously, keeping them out of the functions of the current building, and then trying, I think, in particular, the parking lot that's between the two buildings, will have to wait until the summer between school years to have significant work. I don't know if you have other thoughts, Josh?
No, I think that covered a lot of it. We wrote specific languages in our bid scopes for these trades on, you know, flaggers and everything, working outside of school hours when they're bringing materials in and out, so it's not, it's not a safety concern. This whole entire site will be fenced off. Sibley, we're working through some of those details, but that's going to be kind of the same situation, where we're going to have to barricade off certain areas to allow people to get in safely and out safely, while we still have time to do construction. We won't be able to wait until summer on that one. Got to get going on that one, too.
Excellent questions. No?
Two unrelated questions opposed to Greenville. What is the approximate ceiling height in the media center?
The approximate ceiling height? It's about 15 feet.
Bruce?
Very slightly higher than this.
Secondly, I'm concerned you say that the HVACs are not going to be roofed out?
Correct. Yep, they're interior air handler units, so there's two mechanical penthouses.
Is that new technology?
I think there are certainly other clients I have that prefer to have them inside, so there's a trade-off there on building square footage, but I think it allows your units to not be out in the elements, which is really good for servicing, as well as just unit longevity, so I can point out now that I have this pointer. There's a long skinny mechanical penthouse here, which is kind of right above the main entry hallway, and that has the mechanical units that feed the office, the cafeteria, and the gym in it. And then above, about here, on the classroom area, has two air handlers, and one each feeds each level. So they're all inside. You'll have things like condensing units and fans on the roof, but no air handling equipment.
Tom?
Sort of follow up what Ellen was talking about on the north side. How do the students enter the school if they come in from those feeder trails on the north?
Sure. So there is a sidewalk proposed to, so those feeder trails are a little bit just off the view here, so there's a sidewalk proposed to be here, and then actually, as a part of our discussion with the city about a week ago, week and a half ago, week and a half ago, talked about having a crosswalk in particular right here down to this sidewalk. So they could just get to this blacktop area and come in the building here, but depending on how you choose to have students enter the building, if you want them to come to the cafeteria or the main entry, we need to get them across right here. So they'll pass on the gated side across that blacktop that'll be striped for a crosswalk.
Right. And then also from the west side, do they, like bikers or walkers, would they also like go around the green, the existing Greenville and up over, or are they going to have to cross a couple of driveways to get there?
They are. So we had a lot of discussion with that, which is something that happens today, too. So we had a lot of discussion about where you're going to have crossing guards, so the intended path is to have them come along this sidewalk here, and there, this is already, there's already a crossing guard there, and you'll continue to have that, so come across here, and then make it up this large sidewalk, which is the curb that buses will drop off along, and then get to the main entry. So that's the intended path. Students can be creative sometimes, and so we're trying to make that the most convenient path. We also do have this curb here, so right now you have barriers in that parking lot. So instead of those, we're actually going to have a curb that has plantings on it to try to discourage so much traffic across that lot, because it could be convenient to come across like this. So we're trying to make the intended path as convenient as possible and deter unsafe paths, so...
Is there a place for their bicycles?
Yes, there are bicycle parking on the north and south side of the building.
Then the last thing is, it looks like on the drawing, the one where it shows the Greenville Park, name the, it's like there's, actually, if you go to right here? Yeah.
Yeah.
So does that part come out farther than just a couple of feet?
Yep, yep, that's about, I think it's about seven foot from where the doors are to the edge of the canopy, so a little bit of protection from the elements. Probably not a whole class of kids, but while you're waiting to get in. It's a little deceiving, it's a little easier to see on the floor plan, actually. Those doors are set quite far back here, and then the canopy comes to about here, so...
Okay.
Yeah. That was actually a comment in particular at our last board meeting, and the Buildings and Grounds Team was already all over that, so...
Excellent questions. Okay, we can move on to Sibley then.
Okay. So you will have, I did hand out, or Josh helped me hand out, the design development submittal for Sibley. It's similar to the presentation we'll do today. You saw a similar book like that to Greenville Park, but essentially, you just want to give book like that to Greenville Park, but essentially you just want to give an update of where we're at, as there's been a lot of planning on that building as well. So, when we were here last, we had talked about the core planning group process that happened and since that time, right before school ended, we tried to fit in user groups before your teachers left for the year. We did actually meet with your music teacher once over the summer at our office, which was fun and new for me. She lives just south of downtown St. Paul, so she came to our place. So, we met with every group at least two times and this is our design development plan, so we'll quickly go over that. So, just to orient people, the main entry is here. Anything shown in the light gray is existing walls and anything shown in the very dark black is proposed new walls. And we've labeled spaces in particular that are proposed to be changed as well as a couple just for reference. So, existing gym is down here, existing music is right here. So, the main part of the addition is proposed to extend out right by the existing gym and the existing music, so a second music room and an art room that is purpose-built for art and equitable to new Greenville Park. We actually have a lot of similarity in the design of the rooms there. And then the new kitchen cafeteria proposed to be just, I'll call it planned south of that. So, the kitchen, the kitchen and serveri, cafeteria space, receiving, I can't get that bottom thing to go away, because I don't have a mouse. And then the addition is also working to connect to the existing, it's a standalone mechanical building. It's always been standalone since that building was built, which is not very convenient for your team to access, so the addition will allow for all of their services with receiving and building services to be next to each other. Thank you. Just think if I stop hovering over it, it'll go away. Oh, no. Wrong way to hover.
Just add a little X. There you go, now you're good.
There it goes. Other parts of the addition you can see here is some building storage in particular, trying to find space for kid ventures. There are spaces kind of in a corner hallway right now, so trying to get a really purpose-built space for that. And then we move into the renovations. So, I'll just start at the top. There's some expansion and renovation proposed to the nurses' office for it to better serve the population and the programs that are there, as well as meet accessibility codes, so get an accessible bathroom and a private office to have some private conversations outside of where the cots are. And then there is the major renovation that was funded through the referendum to create a larger media center that's very similar to the parts and pieces from new Greenville Park. So, you can see there's a center collection area, there's a dedicated media teaching space, which is really in the middle of their space right now, some small conference rooms, as well as a dedicated media storage room, and then a flexible lab or a maker space. And then last but not least, trying to get some appropriate space for other programming happening in the building. So, some current other classrooms are proposed to be used for special education and some special education resource space. So, that's what those hatched areas up here are. So, there's some minor changes to cabinetry and storage to convert those. So, just zooming in a little bit here is zooming into the main office and media center area. So, the existing main office is in gray here, so we've got a cot room with space for three cots for the health, a health office, a storage room, and an accessible bathroom. The building conference room just has to move south a little bit for that space to be able to expand. Some, I'll call them student support services, so social worker, coaches and psychologists in this orange here. And then we get to the media center proper, so that's in this kind of blue tealish color, the media teaching space, open learning space, increased transparency on both sides from the two hallways and some operability as the desire, couple small group rooms or other conferencing space, and then that work room and the flex lab. Zooming in a little bit to the addition, so right next to the existing music room is a second space as well as an art room, having this entrance and exit be both for the cafeteria for exiting, but as well as still special education drop-off and being able to use this space at night. Kitchen and serveri here, receiving is in this gray here, which is not a function the building currently has. Another set of student bathrooms here. This is that existing mechanical room that we're trying to wrap with our additions, that your staff can get to it more easily and more functionally. And then a kid ventures and a storage space. So, this is your two exit hallways right here, just being extended to access that addition. Oh, so from a schedule perspective, we are set to issue construction documents for bidding at the, in late September. We're moving into the final engineering coordination and our next update, we'd be able to bring back materials and 3D views, so we're just getting to that point for this project, with the intent that construction would start this fall, or late this fall, I should say, and be complete by end of summer 2020. I said it before for Greenville Park, but of course want to say it for the Sibley team as well. Thank you so much to all the core planning team participants and those who participated in the user group meetings. It was challenging to get them scheduled at the end of the school year there, because turns out they're pretty busy at that time of year, but everybody had a great attitude and was very flexible, so we appreciate that very much. Any questions about Sibley? We're also, I should have mentioned, we're also going through a cost estimating exercise with Sibley right now, too. So, turned over a set of drawings both to a third-party estimator as well as Knutson, just to make sure we're on track.
Excellent. Thank you. Questions regarding Sibley?
Amy? So, I have several questions. Again, thank you for all your great work at Sibley and it's fun to see it all coming together. I was part of this core planning team, so I was impressed by how you involve so many people.
Thank you.
So, my question, I know at one point it had been suggested that the kindergarten classroom move next, the one that's off on one side, move over by the other kindergarten classrooms, but then it would mean it would have an interior classroom. So, I was just wondering whatever happened to that discussion?
Let me get back to that. So, and Dr. Hellman, you jump in too, because I know there was some administrative feedback about that, but I think the lack of an, losing natural daylight for a classroom that had it right now is important, future flexibility for the number of sections you're gonna have, as well as making sure you have equity, too. So, it would be challenging, challenging to get a classroom in the inside, this inside part of the building to have plumbing. So, you would take a classroom that has a bathroom right now and remove that bathroom and that didn't seem like a value add. So, there was some discussion with the principal Scott there on what would be a better use of that funding. Dr. Hellman, if you have other thoughts?
I would agree. I mean, I think that was an initial, hey, wouldn't it be great to have this adjacency, but as you dug into the details, the cost of creating the kindergarten classroom in that space was such that it was not the return on the investment for the overall project that we had hoped for. Having that special education suite, if you will, that really supports those student services was more cost-effective for that area. And we're not displeased with that kindergarten classroom that's on the other side of the building, is really more for a convenience piece. But at the end of the day, when we looked at what the cost would be versus what we would have not been able to do as a result of having to add some of the features that Sal has mentioned, the determination was to keep it as is. It was kind of an initial, hey, this would be really great. And then when we dug into the details, determined it was probably not the best use of the dollars.
I can see that and I think it'd be hard to lose a window to, for them, which it also makes me ask about, we had talked about trying to get natural lighting into the library or the media center through skylights or something like that. Has that gone anywhere?
Sure. So, we're proposing to add a significant amount of transparency and actually operability on the two side walls, to try to borrow some light from the side, as your existing structure is not really set up to add additional holes in the roof. So, that's something that once we get our cost estimate back, we're gonna evaluate, but we know it does not have the capacity for it. So, that's something that I think the project oversight committee is gonna have to weigh when we see what this renovation is proposed to cost with that cost estimate. So, I think we're trying to do the best we can for the dollars that we have and the structure that you have.
I think it's, I think it's fair to say that what we're really intending on, if we can make sure that it's supported within the overall budget, are a strategy that they call barn doors, where they're glass barn doors that when they are closed, they are still transparent and you can see into the space, but you can also open them up during the day, so it is truly kind of a community area.
More open.
I had a chance to see some of Sal's handiwork with barn doors at the middle school in Oatana recently and it's, it is outstanding. And I, it's something that's really a priority to be able to get, because it does make that space just outstanding from a utilization perspective, but also from really having that, that sense of transparency in a building that if you think in the late 1960s when that facility was built, that was not a priority, you know, at the time. So, it would dramatically change, I think, the feel of that center of the building, which would be great. So, that is what the concept is right now and as you can see, there's some great ideas that happen through the process that are either able to do or not. There's some discussion made about, you know, are we getting the best return for that? There's a number of other ways to do what they've suggested in terms of bringing the trains, but we really, I really hope that we're able to get the barn door, what they call the barn door, sliding glass doors. So, it would be, it would be very cool and very functional.
And then, thank you for that. My last question is, I couldn't tell from the diagram, but is there any sort of gender neutral bathroom by the new cafeteria?
Uh, there is a single stall bathroom within the kitchen, I'll say, kitchen suite itself. There's not currently an individual stall restroom proposed within the addition. I suppose there's one in the nurses' office, but beyond that, there's not one shown in the addition right now.
So, if people are there for, for something in the gymnasium or something in the cafeteria, would they be able to reach the gender neutral bathroom if it's in the kitchen area?
I would imagine you would not want people going in your kitchen area. There are those two staff restrooms in the, that are accessed off the hallway closer towards the main office, although it's possible that you might choose to lock that part of the building off. So, some of that's a little operational. You can see here, the zoom in shows a little better. So, there's a bathroom specifically for the kitchen shown here and then there's a bathroom in main office in the receiving area, but that's certainly something we could explore if the board would like us to.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
No?
Leave that side up and show me the emergency exit for a student in the music room.
In the music room right here?
Yes.
Yep, so there's two doors right here and right here. So, there's an exit right here and then there's a way to go this way and get out as well.
There is an exit to the top?
Uh, yep. And then there, it kind of depends on what doors you have locked and not locked.
I don't see, I don't see the swing of the doors showing on it.
Yeah, it's kind of just cut off in this view. And then there are also doors out here and out here. So, this existing exit here is extended and then adding a third exit out of this whole complex to the plan west.
Thank you.
Yeah.
What about locking systems? I mean, is there something that's a locking system in place, you just press one button and all the doors lock?
Uh, there's not a locking system in place that, like all classroom doors lock?
Yeah.
Well, we do have a locking system in place. It's not for classroom doors. Each classroom door doesn't have electronic hardware, but in every one of our buildings and here in the district office, there is a button in the building that usually resides in the principal's office or just outside the principal's office, that the button is pressed and every exterior entry is locked down and 911 is automatically called. In the district office, actually in my office, the next time you come, I'll show it to you, it's, there's a button that I press that can lock down every exterior door in the entire district, exterior doors. We don't, aren't to the point of being able to do electronic locking on interior doors. The cost is incredibly prohibitive. If you remember what we did at, now at the end of this summer, every building, with the exception of Greenville Park current that does not have any doors, you know, teachers can lock the door from the inside, which sounds so simple, but that is not the way that school buildings are typically built. In the last two years, we've updated every interior classroom space to where there's a thumb lock, so that in an emergency, teachers can lock the door from the inside as opposed to having to go around to the outside. Sounds pretty simple, but again, school doors usually weren't built that way. So, we have that physical locking mechanism that's very simple to do from within the classroom and then we do have those exterior locking. I want to say we put those in probably Mr. Lear and Mrs. Antoine, maybe four or five years ago. Even maybe...
Two or three.
Okay, it's in the last several years that we've put in the unlocking mechanism. Again, we test those, I need, I think, three times a year. Jim Colseth, we actually conduct a test of every system. Usually it's one in the summer, one over Christmas break and then one over spring break. We actually, it's actually kind of a fun thing for people in our district office to get to press the district-wide. We have people practice it. And then what happens is we get a readout from every system to say, did all of the things work like they were supposed to? So, I hope that answers your question, Jeff.
That's good. Then, I mean, like St. Olaf and Carlton, because I know both the locksmiths have worked up. I mean, card systems are good and they're, you know, expanding and maybe expensive, but you know, it's what deters any kind of crime is a lot of, you know, lights and cameras. So, do we have that built into a budget for what our security is for this building and what has been the norm? Because everything goes through with the different, you know, millenniums of what's the norm. So, I mean, are we, you know, within that, I understand maybe that's something we could add later, but we're spending a lot of money, we want to do it right the first time.
Yep. So, new security systems are proposed for, obviously for Greenville Park. So, there's a, it's under the blanket technology budget, so that needs to buy things like voice amplification, card readers, cameras, classroom technology. So, there's a budget for that. It's just under a million, I think nine hundred and thirty thousand is coming to mind. So, that's for all of new Greenville Park. And then new lighting and cameras proposed in the additions here at Sibley as well, so expanding the systems you have, both interior and exterior lighting in the renovated areas and our addition areas, and then obviously planning new card reader locations for several of these exits, too. So, yes.
Okay. Any other questions regarding Sibley or the construction in general?
I think we have one brief update. I'm gonna skip past this letter, which is later in your agenda, and let Josh talk a little bit about current construction.
Yep, I will make it quick. So, here's what's going on at the addition and renovation at Bridgewater. We, in the last six weeks really, we've excavated the foundation, put in the concrete. We've got structural steel is up, decking's on, we're starting to finish up on the exterior stud framing. If you look at the camera now, there's actually insulation going on the walls. So, it's coming quick. We, I heard a rumor that we finally did get the state plumbing permit pushed through, so underground can start and we'll be shooting to pour that slab here in the next couple of weeks. Before school starts, the goal is to get 100% complete on the roofing, so that we can keep the odors down and not make that such a nuisance. So, that's goal, goal number one over the next three weeks or two weeks, I guess. I mean, I talked about the underground plumbing, electrical, and then as soon as that slab is poured, we will go ahead and put the, start the interior framing of the walls. For new Greenville, stuff that we've completed here in the last month, obviously the bids were received last week and really over the next month, it's gonna be mobilization. The site fence will go up, trailers will get dropped off here likely next week. We'll begin, starting the surveying of the thing and then permit pending, earthwork will begin and foundations will start going in. Utilities for storm, sewer, water, that's all the goal here in the next month. And then obviously procuring the long lead chillers, boilers, air handling units, glass glazing is expected. I won't touch on groundbreaking unless Matt would like to, because I don't know quite if we nailed everything down, but that's also a highlight coming up for you in the next month or so. And I'll let him maybe touch on that in the construction update. We, we send Matt and his team on the POC a weekly construction update, so I'm thinking he's posting that on his website on what we're doing. This will kind of grow as all the projects get moving, so he can see what we're up to for the week and what's coming up and some, you know, some construction tips or highlights on there as well back of the month. We do have a webcam up if it's not, you haven't seen it yet, at Bridgewater and...
Can you try to click that link and see if it'll work?
Pretty cool.
I think it's gonna work. Just, just click there.
Maybe because it's the PDF version, I can try to...
Maybe you can copy and paste it.
Yeah.
So, we have one up for Bridgewater and we will definitely have one up for Greenville, so you get to, get to watch us, watch us build away.
Can type it in there?
If you just go to norfieldschools.org/construction.
Nobody watching tip.
And then if you click on the planning, that first one, the planning and construction, just down a little bit, there's a little button. Keep going down.
Oh, keep going, sorry.
Nope. There you go, right there.
There we go, it's right there.
So, you can see the insulation actually starting up on the outside of the building.
Do the time lapse.
Takes a picture every fifteen minutes.
That steel was put up in about four days, so they, they're really moving on that.
Fabulous.
Any, any construction questions?
Construction questions, board members. Thank you, Sal and Josh, for these thorough presentations and for all your work, and we will get to the formal process of approving the Greenville construction bid as part of our item for individual action.
Thank you again.
Thank you for all your great work.
We just can't say enough about the collaboration of Wold and Canute, and we have just been working together, and it has, at every step of the way, the communication has been great, the professionalism is just out of this world, so we cannot thank our partners from Canute and Wold who have this unique piece of listening. They listen to people, and then they bring us what they can do, and they tell us what we can't do, it's a very transparent process. So we just cannot thank you enough, because, you know, we are getting to the point though where when stuff starts to happen and things go up, it will not be as simple as it is on a PowerPoint screen. And so the mantra for the next year and less than one week, because we're going to be finished by August fifth, is you have to put up with the rain to get the rainbow, because this is not a linear process. There will be things that will come along that you will hear about in the community, we just have to say we all have to exercise patience, and we have to put up with the rain to get the rainbow, because if this was all perfect, if the weather is all perfect and the supplying is all perfect, we, we will have a great, and maybe that will happen, but we've been through this before, and we know that that's not the case. So we just need, at this point is when we need to really stress people that we've got really competent people in charge who are doing everything that they can to keep this on time and on budget. So thank you, and I just wanted to share that.
No, excellent, thank you for those remarks, Dr. Hillman, because we absolutely agree as a board, and so we're really thrilled that you're on the team and, and helping us do this, this is really exciting, so thank you.
Thank you.
It's getting real.
Okay, absolutely. Okay, so the next item for discussion is Principal Joel Lear from Northfield High School is presenting the school improvement plan. As a reminder, this may likely be the last time we see Principal Lear until second semester, as you know, Joel is going on sabbatical on, with Global for St. Olaf, so I probably should have said that after the presentation, but I guess I was anxious to get that.
All right, so now the pressure is on to leave you all with an engaging presentation. I will tell you that this is the first and only time I've worn a suit all summer long and probably the last time I will until January, so busting out all of the stops for this presentation, so, well, thank you very much for allowing, am I on the mouse or the arrow?
You can do the mouse, you can do the keyboard, you can do the little, you know.
Again, thank you for allowing, well, all of the schools for that matter, to have the opportunity to share the progress report from the previous year's site improvement plan as well as the plan for the coming year, and so without any further ado, we'll get started. As you know, so the site improvement plans in general, but certainly the Northfield High School Improvement Plan is a clear set of shared goals that is aligned to the district's strategic plan, inspires action, and aligns efforts for student growth and achievement. Now, that sounds very flowery, but I think that that middle bullet, the inspires action, is something that I'm incredibly proud of with the team that we have at the high school, really across the board in terms of our educational assistance, the support staff, teachers, administrators, administrative assistants, I think everyone is focused in on what is it that we need to do to make this school a better place for kids and to allow student growth and achievement to really be maximized and, and realized to the highest potential. And so this site improvement plan really puts those concepts, those passions that our staff brings to the building every, every day into a quantifiable result. So in review, as you will remember from last year's site improvement plan, we were shooting for 94% of all students and 86% of those who were identified for interventions by our multi-tiered systems of support team, our MTSS as we fondly, fondly call it, will pass all of their classes during the 18, 19 school year, and so as you can see, we had, we got painfully close, 93.5 of the 94% goal and 85% of the 86% goal. And again, to, just to reiterate the importance of that 85% number, our multi-tiered systems of support team identifies students who are struggling. So it's a, it is a number that, a number of our schools in the region would shoot for, for their entire student body, and we're talking about students who, for one reason or another, academic, social, behavioral, developmental, are struggling with the academic pursuits, and so the system is in place to help those students, and obviously the, the results are showing when we can see those types of numbers. The student survey, looking at students who are feeling in 10 through 12, simply because it's a, we, we look to students who can do it before and after from ninth grade to 10th grade, 10th grade to 11th, and 11th to 12th, so we're giving our ninth grade students a chance to transition. We do ask them other questions about feeling connected and transitioning to the high school, it just happens to be this particular question is for the 10th through 12th graders, and asking them if they feel connected to their high school, and, and we had a 5.5% increase in those who said almost always or often. While it didn't hit the 10%, it did mark the third year in a row that that number has increased for our student body in, in feeling connected to the school, and as, as those of you that are aware of our, our Raider Nation and School Climate Initiatives throughout the building, we're pleased to see that, that occurring as well. And then the third goal is specific to our work in our professional learning communities, but reiterates the point about the 94% passing rate for students across the 9 and 12 spectrum, and again, that number was 93.5. So some key reflections from that, whoops, try that again, sorry about that. Some key reflections from the 18, 19 plan, we're going to continue to improve the multi-tiered systems and support offerings, and specific to that, we are looking to expand not only physically, we're expanding into a second room, our MTSS room, which is just across the hallway here, is bursting at the seams with a number of support programs that we have, so we've actually opened up a space in the S wing around the corner from the current space, so we'll have two, two staff members who are coordinating two separate spaces to expand our Odysseyware programming, and also just to expand our general intervention systems to allow us to work with more students and more effectively. And if, if you have a chance to visit our MTSS room, you know that we have just an amazing group of assistants, of licensed staff, and, and really people who are here for the love and passion of, of helping kids, almost to a point where they're volunteering their time and are working with students on an individual one-to-one basis, and that's the, the beautiful thing about this program is that, you know, had you told me 13 years ago, we would have a system in place that is, is continually working one-to-one, I would say, well, that's a lovely thought, how are we going to pay for that, how are we going to make that work, how are we going to have the staff to do it? And, and really from my, my vantage point, it's been, you know, allowing people who have these great ideas to flourish in those settings where they know those ideas can work. In addition to that, and one of the things that, that I shared with you in our spring update about our flex period was, one of the initiatives specific to our flex period will be a, a more concentrated effort on the academic component. We really wanted that first year to be kind of all things to all students and, and fulfill the needs that they had, but we think that we can put some things in place, just simply in terms of how we talk with kids and to kids about academic supports during that time, to increase the access that they're making of that time for those academic programs, so we're excited about that as well. And also, you know that our, if you've been paying attention over the last three or four years, the goals look very similar as we talk about passing rates and professional learning communities, so we're expanding our, our site improvement goals to hit some wider areas, but we'll still focus in on that passing rate, because I still believe in my heart that we can get to that point where we report back and tell you that all of our students are passing all of their classes. So our 19, 20 improvement goals, and the first, the first goal is from our A&amp;I program, the Achievement and Integration Program, through which we are accessing some additional funding to help support what's happening in our MTSS program, specific some, specifically some oversight coordination of the program, as well as expanding what I mentioned about talking about Odysseyware, which is an online credit recovery system, I apologize for leaping over that part, and that's something that will function out of that second room that, that we're opening up for our MTSS program. So we're looking at college readiness, composite benchmark scores for high school seniors who will qualify for free and reduced price lunch, will increase from the 35% baseline number that we've established over the last three years to 60%, which is the baseline number for non-FRP. So we believe that the interventions that we're putting in place and the support that we're giving students can really close the gap between our non-FRP students and, and our FRP students over the last three years. And that's in 2022, it's measured by either the ACT composite benchmark score or the Accuplacer. We have really grappled, and I would say really in all of the time we've been here, looking at standardized testing as a means of identifying progress and identifying targets for us to pursue as we think about how we structure our programming and how those numbers inform our programming at the building level, but also at the, the classroom level. And so with the, the ACT and what the ACT has done in terms of expanding access not only to their scoring system, but also to what does that mean, and how does that inform what we do at, at our educational institutions? And then the Accuplacer for students for whom the ACT just isn't appropriate or necessary in their pursuits of what's coming post-secondary? And so we use those scores as, as an indicator of how our students are progressing in terms of their college readiness. As you know, our CCO Career and College Readiness Program is moving into its second year, so there are a number of initiatives in place that are really keying in on that focus of saying, when our students are graduating, great, we have a high graduation rate, but are they college ready? And are they ready to be successful at the institutions, whatever they choose to do? Are they being successful at those levels? The parent satisfaction survey, which we, we offered for the first time this year via the student, excuse me, the Studer Parent Engagement Survey, we're looking at two specific items of emphasis for this coming year, and the questions refer to parents receiving regular feedback from school staff on how well their children are learning, and also receiving positive phone calls, emails, or notes about their child from school. And as you know, sometimes we can get caught in the quagmire of reporting and re-reporting and following up with data, and forget that these are, are humans who are connected to parent humans who need to hear those reinforcement messages from, from staff. So over the last two years, we've done some anecdotal things that have really gained a lot of response from parents, where we will take half of a staff meeting and say, before you report to the staff meeting, send five emails, positive emails about students to their parents, and invariably, 99% of those come back with, oh my goodness, thank you very much for, for letting us know that. So we're looking at this data as really informing a more formal process to say, how do we establish a, a means of making sure that, that our parents, our parent student body, our parent body is really hearing about the great things that their students are doing here at school, academically, socially, potentially in our activities program, hearing those messages? We talk about as administrators, as teachers, as staff members, how important feedback is to us, we should assume automatically that those same types of feedback are welcomed by not only our student population, but the parents who support our students. So we are looking currently at a, at a response of a 2.9 on a 5-point scale, 2.95 for the first question, and 2.64 for the second, and that was again in the spring of 2019, and we're looking to survey results in 2020 of 4.0 across the board. And I really do believe, given that's a baseline number with nothing more than some anecdotal and accidental work in this area, that we can really key in and focus where parents will see a significant change in that, in that perspective. And then finally, the third goal, and sticking to this piece of 95% of our, our students and 87% of our students identified for interventions will pass all their classes, and, and like I said, if we continue to grow in little bits, we'll one day be talking to you about 100% in both of those numbers, and I look forward to sharing that with you when that becomes a reality, and I really do believe it will be soon. All right, and then the last piece is just strategies and, the strategies and how we get there, and also the assessments that, that help us understand whether we've been successful or not. And so the, the three goals are listed on the left, the college readiness goal, the parent satisfaction goal, and the passing rate. The college readiness piece, those pieces are all again tied back to that, that achievement integration program that we'll be implementing with some additional dollars to expand the MTSS program. Regularly scheduled, and I talked about again, those, those anecdotal moments, but being more purposeful about regular scheduled moments when staff respond, excuse me, interact with parents via email about positive things they're having in their classroom with their individual students. But re, committing to refocusing on, on grade books being complete and timely, sometimes we are so busy teaching and learning that we need to remind ourselves that, that there are some parents for whom that is the only interaction, and so we need to make sure that we're doing grade books and those types of communications in a timely manner. And then we're also looking at a strategy where we are taking our parent-teacher conferences, and instead of doing two days in the fall, two days in the spring, we're going to do four, one each quarter, regularly scheduled, where the first and the third will be at the beginnings of the semester, and really will be an opportunity for parents to lead the process with the, the, the staff member to say, here is the type of learner my student is, and here is what's going to help my student be successful. So it's really an information gathering opportunity for staff, as opposed to the reverse, where we're providing information about students' progress. It's so early in the year, the temptation to turn it into a report about progress will be gone, and so it will really, it's really focused on being in a conversation between the staff member and the parent, really getting at that, the individuality of those students and their, their learning needs, before we get too far into the year, and perhaps some of those, those patterns have been established and it's too late for us to respond to them. And then the passing rate, again, you're very familiar with that, and so we'll continue to use that same type of programming, but again, referring back to the, not only the college readiness piece of expanding our MTSS offerings, but those obviously will have an, an effect on our passing rate when we look at those grades in the spring. So the Studer Parent Engagement Survey will be the, the evaluation for the parent satisfaction piece, then obviously the spring grade analysis for the passing rate, and then marks of adequate yearly progress on our Odysseyware program on grades is reported by teachers, as well as those benchmark scores leading up to 2022, when we start evaluating how our ACT and Accuplacer scores are reflecting and informing how we are performing in the classroom and in our support systems. All right?
Excellent, thank you. Great presentation. So questions board members have for Principal Lear? Ellen?
Sure, so I had a question on the first smart goal, and I was really excited to see it, because I think it's really ambitious, but can you tell me a little bit about in a year, and you're presenting to the board on progress, because this is a, we're looking at a 2022 goal, what sort of measures will you be reporting on? What are sort of these interim pieces? Is it, is it a, are you going to, will we hear a percentage that's 42% or?
Yeah, and I think what, what we're, you know, what this goal really tries to accomplish is, is it says, and I think it's a beautiful thing that the site improvement plan is an annual goal-setting mission, there's also some limitation to that in terms of really using baseline data to kind of establish what realistic and, and legitimate feasible goals are, and so I think as we look at this as a three-year plan, and really, a lot of our goals are three-year plans, we just have annual benchmarks as we look at our site improvement plan. So that 17 to 19 baseline data for the FRP kids and the 2019 non-FRP students, we will be able to have benchmarks along the way, it's just that that becomes the, the line of demarcation that by 2022, that's where we want students to be. In addition to the fact that, that the three-year goal allows us to look at a, a item like the ACT and the Accuplacer, which we haven't used in the past, to make sure we're kind of on the right track in terms of how we're going to use those instruments in a way that makes sense. So I may be reporting back to you in a year that's, that says, we need to tweak this idea a little bit, because here are some things we found as we looked at those scores. The other piece too will be that, that as we've talked about over the last few years, as you know, the ACT has been, I say offered, given to all of our juniors, and really the dialogue we've had over the last year is about those students for whom that might be an unnecessary effort, when the Accuplacer is really the, the test that they should be aiming for, and the test that they need to pursue what it is they want to pursue post-secondary. And so the percentage of students that take each is also going to play a little bit into to those numbers, because each of those instruments will kind of evaluate those students differently.
Joel, can you just describe what the, you know, what the ACT does for students, what the Accuplacer does for students, just the difference between the two?
Yeah, and it's, it's really about, if, if you think about our college, our historical college readiness approach, or college preparatory approach, the ACT is obviously a universal historic test that, that gives a, an indicator of progress toward being ready to go to a four-year college and university. The Accuplacer is a much broader, not a broader instrument necessarily, but it's, it's serving a purpose for other institution, technical, technical schools, community colleges, other programs, that students might not be pursuing a four-year degree, and so those, those institutions that are not requiring the ACT, but require the Accuplacer for entrance into, like I said, the community college level, will be satisfying that need for students as well. And also bringing it internal, so if we're looking, when we're looking at those scores- are going to be not only more ready for those exams, but it's also going to help us inform how do we, how do we think about preparing those students for those exams in a way that then springboards them into being better prepared for the colleges and post-secondary plans that they make? Get it what you need to mean?
Sure. Yeah, sure.
I just want to make sure, so the 35% rolling average, and so that's why when you look at 2022, you're going to be looking at a rolling average as well.
Right.
But is the 35%, that's based on ACT because, so I understand it now, isn't, because that's what we have for a certain measure right now?
Correct.
But the rolling average, we look at a 2022, maybe some other mix?
Yep, exactly.
Okay.
Exactly.
Excellent question. Amy?
Thanks for speaking with us tonight, and I have a couple of things. First, I believe that the official rules of rounding, you can round up to 93.5 to 94% and make your goal, but...
Let me get change here.
That being said, I do appreciate the fact that you kept it at 93.5% because that means you're remembering those four or five students who didn't actually make it. So you're not leaving them behind. So, but I have a question about the parent feedback, a couple of it. I assume it's on a scale of five. If you could talk a little bit more about that. But then also, how do you collect it and how do you ensure parent participation in that?
How do you ensure parent participation? That's an excellent question. I will tell you that the, it is a voluntary process. So in terms of ensuring, you know, we, we look to engage our parents in a number of different ways, and the parent engagement feedback, excuse me, the parent engagement survey is another one of those tools. And so what we really try to reinforce with our parent community is that we are listening when we gather data. So if we are gathering data about their perspectives on school programming or classes that we offer, or in this case, how satisfied they are with what we are doing as an institution, our hope is that they have seen over time that we respond to that data. And that's really why, you know, I think it's important that not only do we have, we have a series of questions, some of which are specific to their students in school, how satisfied their students are, how satisfied they are with administration, with teachers, how they feel connected to their institution. So, you know, I really feel it's important and particularly poignant that we have these as part of our Site Improvement Plan. So we go public with a statement that says, not only do we do this survey, here's the information we gathered from parents, and now here is the initiative that is coming out of that survey data so that the next time, perhaps, we will ensure that there's a 10% growth in the number of parents that are responding to that survey. So it is voluntary. It's sent out as an email blast with a request and invitation for them to fill out the survey. And I don't have the exact numbers of responses in front of me in that. I don't know if you have access to that.
I'm looking it up immediately.
But in general, we felt pretty, pretty good about the response rate across the district, quite frankly, but specific to our adulting. But we look forward to, you know, increasing that number as, as parents begin to see the value of responding. Because we know they are inundated, everyone's inundated with surveys, but if we're demonstrating that we're using that information, then we'll hopefully garner some additional responses.
Could you explain the number system? So, you know, it's a satisfaction survey, so it's like one unsatisfied, two...
Yeah, great question. So where I'd like to start that description and what has helped me kind of process this is that, that three is what Studer describes as mixed feelings. So we kind of, yeah, we kind of get some of that, but we, you know, we're not inundated with positive comments about our parents. So if you think about that three as being kind of the pivot point, you know, north of which is, parents are feeling pretty positive, left or south of which they're, to some degree, not satisfied. And it's, it is a, you know, it's one means of kind of pinpointing a numerical number to a, you know, a qualitative response, but it's, it at least gives us some semblance of a sense of where parents are. So we read that as, and like I said, the 6.4 is below that mixed feeling, so it's tilting a little bit toward, well, we would like to really hear more. What I like about these two questions is they are, as a former superintendent I worked with used to refer to, they're opportunities for quick wins that, and that's why I say from a 2.64 to a 4.0 to me is a very feasible jump in the course of a year because it's, or as Matt would describe it, as low-hanging fruit. These are things that we can turn quickly. And we've talked about this as a staff. We have 79 licensed staff. If they send an email, one email today and one email tomorrow and do that for five days, you can start doing the multiplication of how many of our students are, excuse me, how many of our parent community members are receiving positive emails with their kids. Now multiply that over, you know, a quarter or a full, full year, it can be a really powerful impact. Some parents will begin to think what we're up to, but that's all right. We can deal with that, that response as well.
So the high school had 352 responses, which is a pretty good survey response when we compare it to others. Across the district was about, well, not about, it was 1,152. It is a survey that is not conducted by us. The surveys are conducted by our partners from Studer Education. There is a very prescriptive rollout process that we use for all three of the survey tools that we do. This was our first year of learning, but each of the buildings rolled their parent engagement surveys out to their staff or for the parent engagement part to share it. So basically, what they do is they go through the different things that we're measuring, they talk about the why it's important to collect feedback from either employees or from parents, they share what were the wins, what were the top two rated statements in the entire survey celebrating our success, and then what were the two areas that were the greatest opportunities for growth. We then ask staff to help us identify what are strategies that we could use to be able to make those responses get better. It's the continuous improvement process that, what they call the flywheel, starting to spin, and then we are reporting that back. Now, one of the things that we'll do differently next year is that we are doing these three surveys for the first time this year. It's a district services survey, which our administrative team fills out. It is a employee engagement survey. Obviously, all of our employees are asked to fill it out in this parent one. We're going to move this back earlier a little bit in the school areas. We just frankly ran out of time for every building to be able to have a rollout for their parents. At the elementary schools, it's the PTOs that we plan to roll these out to as a small group so that they can share it as well as sending it through a newsletter as well. And then at the middle school, it'll be their site improvement team, and the high school is working on creating some parent-focused groups to be able to share that information with, and again, get feedback. But I think the key thing is that the, we will, because when I do the celebrations and challenges this year, you're going to see the results from these surveys embedded in that process. When you look at the questions, you'll say, yeah, those would all be good things that we would like to be scored well on because parents are a substantial, they are our customers, right? They are a significant stakeholder, and making sure that we understand how they feel about certain things that excellent organizations have been identified as having those things in common. So like communicating with your stakeholders, these two areas. When we talk with, these were the two lowest rated things in nearly every one of our buildings. You're going to see very common goals coming out of these school improvement plans. And what our friends from Studer Education tell us, that the baseline data is almost always like this. And we got a chance to go to a conference with maybe seven or eight other schools who are doing this same kind of continuous improvement framework. And at one, at the same table, there were two schools going after the same exact question, one at about a three, another one at a 4.6 out of five, trying to say, how can we continue to improve that score? So that's what we like about the system is it's, we're never saying, oh, that's good enough. We're saying, what are the indicators that we can continuously improve upon? And then how can we share that data with people so they know that we've used it and what can we do to improve it, even if it's only 1/10 of a percentage point or 1/10 of a point on the five-point scale? And I really, Joel did an excellent job of rolling this data out to his staff, and there were rightfully so, some really good questions about the measurement tool itself, about what was, what was, what were parents really asking for, but that's what that dialogue process is intended to, how do we serve people better? So we were, for getting 352 responses to a survey, I think that's probably at the upper end of what you usually get. 1,100 from the district, I can tell you, I've done a lot of district surveys over the years, clearly one of the best responses that we've gotten. And what our friends from Studer Education tell us is that those numbers will continue to go up as we share the data with parents and as we share what we did about the data with parents. People will respond to surveys if they know that their feedback will be utilized for improvement.
One of the pieces, too, if it, talking about the rollout process, there was a rollout process for staff engagement earlier in the year with a survey, a very similar, not a very similar survey, but similar process. And one of the, the most powerful questions, I think, that comes out of that for the parent survey as well as the staff survey is, what does a five look like? So it's one thing to stare at a 3.2 or 3.8 or a 2.64, 2.95, but what is a five? So what in the, what is in the mind's eye of a parent says, the school is doing the best job they can at this? And so to have that answer, whether it be what staff perceives for administration or whether parents perceive and students perceive in terms of the institution, that becomes a really powerful piece because then you've got your stakeholders saying, this is what your, your goal is. This is the tangible, you know, result of that process. So I just think it's a great powerful question for us to be able to work with in this process.
Excellent. Other questions, comments?
I have a couple of questions. Let me just review. In terms of the, where you're doing the, the conferences, I know you have worked so hard on trying to find sort of the, the secret sauce and really being able to engage, and again, all about the, you know, parent engagement. So, so I applaud you with, with trying to work with that. And so you were talking about the individuality of students and having that conversation early on, which I think is great. Would you envision students wanting to be a part of that? Is there a way they could be involved or is that more ideally set up for a parent to communicate?
No, I think we could do both, certainly. You know, and we love, you know, when, we don't have a huge population of students that come with their parents for parent-teacher conferences, but absolutely that voice, you know, and what it does provide, if you think about a classroom of 25 students, if a student has a real clear sense of what type of learner he or she is, it may not be comfortable, you know, sharing that in a classroom setting, even if it's before the class begins or after the class ends. So we would absolutely applaud and encourage students to come with their parents because I think that that, again, to me, you know, comprehensive education is about the conversation and the dialogue and the relationship you build there. And so if that foundation starts with the parent and the student and the teacher talking about what's, what is in the best interest of the student, how do they learn most effectively? What are the pitfalls in what they have seen as learners in the previous years that they've been a student? Absolutely, that conversation can just be that much more rich.
And I think it'll be real interesting, too, as, as the dialogue starts to increase, as you had talked about, between the teacher and the, and the parent, that they may feel more comfortable coming in and really expanding on that relationship. I think it's really key. So in terms of that, in terms of you talking about how a teacher is going to do that, how is that going to look for them as, as another, I have to do this? Is there some relief on some other areas for them to be able to execute all this in a finite amount of time?
Yeah, no, that's a great question. And I think, I think it will be a welcome change for our staff because if you think about, on two levels, one, on this kind of theoretical level of, I'm staring at a group of students that some of whom I may know, most of whom I don't, particularly as a learner or as learners in the classroom, and now I've got this jumpstart, you know, seven days into the year where I've got some insider information about the student, what makes them click, what they're, you know, what makes them feel successful, what they need as learners in the classroom. So I think, I think teachers will welcome that. And they also, and our teaching staff recognizes that the current traditional model of parent-teacher conferences, which has served incredibly well for decades and decades, is, is waning in terms of that level of functionality and purpose. So I think they are much more interested in if they perceive more effort in terms of kind of getting this information and cataloging it and using it in a way that is worthwhile for the students in their class. I think they will see that as certainly superior to, you know, really the regurgitation of information that's available online, that their kids are bringing home on a daily basis. So I think they're, they're welcoming that. And they also recognize that, you know, if you've been to particularly our second night of conferences in the fall and spring, the numbers wane and it's a, it's a slow evening. So if we can increase the engagement and the participation in that end, I think they'll definitely see that as a positive.
Excellent. So in terms of the teaching staff being able to communicate, sending the emails to parents, that, is there a dedicated time for them to do that?
Right, so that's our plan, is to have, have specific dedicated time. And we, and when I talk about kind of the accidental anecdotal, we would use our monthly staff meeting time for that. So if, if it were a particular staff meeting that was light in terms of an agenda, we would say, you know, take this time and send five. But, but at very least, it would be, whether it be attached to those staff meetings or perhaps even on a morning, you know, once the contract time starts, this particular five minutes set aside, one way or another, have a formal, specific time period where everyone is doing that so that we're consistent and we develop habits.
Okay, excellent. So I have two other questions. Odysseyware, I was excited to see that. We've heard Darryl Keller here, the director of the ALC, talking about how, how that's worked so extremely well. And you talked about some collaboration with the high school in terms of high school students going to the ALC with, you know, not needing credit recovery at that point. So it's good to see that. So the Odysseyware, has that been used on a limited basis or not at all in the high school? Is this a brand-new initiative?
No, it's been used, actually, and the reason that we're breaking out a new room is because Odysseyware has kind of outgrown its present square footage. We have, I believe, last year, we were in the neighborhood of, when we finished the year, about 70 to 75 kids accessing credit recovery through Odysseyware. And it says, you know, we have this idea of online learning being, you know, kind of off in the corner by yourself, but we have, you know, our Promise Fellows, we have EAs that are working in the MTSS room, and our MTSS coordinator, Carrie Duba, they are, they're with those students and they are working closely with them. And that's why when we talk about the A&amp;I program that will expand it, it's expanding it in terms of personnel as well. So we have more, more sets of eyes and more people interacting with that program. So when a student is working through a science credit, for example, they're still working with a licensed teacher that is helping guide through that, that is responding with feedback to the assignments that they're doing. So, so we're excited about that. And it's, and the nice thing about it is that the team we've got in place is utilizing Odysseyware in a way that makes sense for, for our institution and not just saying that this is this canned curriculum online, so go and do it. But it's adapting it, adopting it, it's, it's helping it evolve so that it fits the needs of our students. So we have, we have some people who've actually been doing some rewriting of units, who have added specific pieces that, that are local curricular types of things to that software to make it truly Northfield Zone as opposed to just this, like I said, this canned curriculum that we buy into.
Then my last question, this will be the second year of Flex, the Flex Hour, and, and the reports to the board in terms of the surveys of students and staff were always really good to see and wondered if you envisioned what sort of surveying you might do this year to, to continue to get feedback.
Yeah, we'll certainly do that. And we did twice, twice during the course of the year last year, and we'll do the same both for the college and career readiness piece because we'll be in our second year of our, it's not a contract, but agreement, if you will, with the Teachers Association to work through that, that curriculum. So there will be two, each semester, there will be a feedback for, for students and staff for that piece. But again, specific to that academic piece, we're going to try to key in a little bit more on that academic support side of things. We know students are, are, have been very adept at getting their social needs met, and that's great, and we, we are unapologetic about that. But we do also see a tremendous value for the students who are, who are struggling. And it's finding that balance between giving them academic help, but also giving them the things that they need from that hour. But I would really see, trying to tease out some additional questions about the academic pieces and, and even looking at kind of building a roadmap to say, what types of things do you need to hear or see or be offered in order for you to pursue those types of things during our flex period? So...
Excellent. Okay. Excellent. Thank you. And then lastly, we certainly have to thank you and your staff for the vision that you've had around improving and making our, our high school building more flexible learning spaces and modern and, and the work that's being done over the summer and the halls we've been able to access as board members over the summer and seeing the improvements. Tom, you have a question?
Yeah, can I ask?
Absolutely.
For parents who can't make a conference for whatever reason, especially the one where given feedback about their child's learning style, is there a way to have a online form that at the same time?
Yeah, and that's a great idea. And we had talked about having kind of multi-layers of, of means and making sure those one-to-one conversations, even if they're electronic, are happening. So, yeah, we'll make sure that we do a follow-up coming out of that, of that event and say, if you weren't able to be here, here again was the structure. We'd love to hear from you. Here's a form to fill out. And those can be directed to, you know, right to the individual teachers that, that those students are working with.
Okay, excellent. Yes, it's going to be exciting to have students come back and see the building and see the changes.
It will be, very, very much so.
So, thank you. And I think we have to wish you all the best you've had under, around the world, global semester with St. Olaf. And we, of course, welcome... And we, of course, welcome, who has been sitting in the audience, Laura K. Allen, who will be the interim principal, a very able, skilled, passionate and energetic administrator. So we're really thrilled that she can take the helm for the short time that Joel will be away. So we wish you and your family all the best.
Thank you. I appreciate that. We're very excited.
Yes. Okay, thank you. Yes. Well, we'd certainly love her to come to the podium if she's willing.
Come on down.
Come on down, Laura K. Laura K. Allen.
Laura K. Allen has actually been at several meetings, sitting in the back of the room, so she's ready to go. Well, you already have officially started as a Bogusfer, so.
Well, and it's, you know, one of the things that I've talked about with my family in terms of the most difficult pieces of this leave is to, you know, leave the institution where I, you know, my professional career over the last 13 years has been every day. And so it's a little bit like that child where I hope I'm leaving it in good hands and it's safe and protected and well taken care of. And it's, I don't think I've had a conversation with Laura K. yet where I've mentioned something and she's said, yep, I read that. Yep, I've looked at that. Yep, I've studied that. And so, you know, she hit the ground running last week, with some days that we were working together and getting oriented. And we'll continue to do that here this week and next week. I am very excited to have our institution in her able hands, so.
Thank you very much. I look forward to working with all of you. And I know I'll be in a good position because Joel provides great leadership here. And Marnie and Jeff have already been very, very helpful. And the people I've met, students I've met already, have had a great place here.
For those few who absolutely, I find it surprising that someone doesn't know Laura K. Allen. But I suppose there are those out there. So anyway, excellent. Thank you. Jeff, you have a comment?
I was wondering, can you expand on, I mean, you, how long were you, what work did you do in this building and where Apple Valley is where it can reuse?
Well, I was a school educator in one way, shape or form for 34 years. And I did spend from 1987 through 97 as a school administrator here at the middle school and at the high school. I was the middle school, first of all, assistant principal. Then I became the principal. And then I came out here and I spent five years as the assistant principal. And then I shifted and went to Apple Valley High School. And I spent my last 17 years as an assistant principal type at Apple Valley High School. Retired about five years ago. And I'm working on retirement because I keep going back to long-term opportunities such as this. And this is my seventh one that I've been, that I've done in one way, shape or form. It's not my longest one, but it's my second to the longest one, so. But as a, I was a high school graduate here. I coached in this district. You know, I was a school administrator. I was a parent here. And I've been, lived in Northville my whole life. So I've been following Northville High School pretty closely over the decades. So I'm glad to be here.
Obviously, I know you and I'm glad to have you here, so thank you.
Thank you, my friend.
We like to jokingly say, the only thing Laura K. has failed at is retirement. So welcome. Thank you. And best of luck to you, Joel, as well.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so that we will move on now to, need no introduction, but we will, for those watching at home, Nancy Antoin, Bridgewater Principal, who will present Bridgewater's site improvement plan. Welcome, Nancy.
Thank you very much. Thank you for the opportunity to present tonight. Thank you very much. All right. Things at Bridgewater are going well. Obviously, we have a little construction underway, which is exciting. And all of it's really exciting, even though like today, days like today where they say, hey, we're going to turn the water off at noon and it won't be back on for the rest of the day. We adapt because we know that the sunshine's coming. We're in, we're not quite at the rainbow phase, but we're getting there and it's working well. So again, thank you for the opportunity to present this tonight. You know, we have a great crew at Bridgewater. And we've got a staff that works really, really hard. We've got kids that come to us just as they are. We get the best kids parents have. And we've got a great group of families that have done just an amazing job of helping us to work with their child for them to be successful in the future. So very proud of that fact. Obviously, we're all about continuous improvement, but we really want to focus on continuous improvement for all students, not only academically but socially as well. We seek, we're looking for ways to improve every year. We do partner with our parents. And we also partner with the community to make this work because it's not, it's not something that we can do by ourselves. We're going to, we plan to do whatever it takes to help students grow at their learning level, not at someone else's learning level, but their own. Our, as far as our goals go, I actually took, we only met, we truly met one of our goals, but I'm claiming the other, the second one for our math and reading goals. This year, we had a new reading curriculum. And we're also working with some alignment with our math curriculum. So it, our goals aren't as glowing as some may want. But at the same time, we're making, we are making growth, which I think is important. We've met our climate goal and we've also met our parent engagement goal. Reflections from the year, obviously, the implementation of CCC, it has definitely improved our consistency across, not only our building but across the district at the elementary level. We have, we're a long way from recognizing the true benefit of having that consistent reading curriculum. I think it's outstanding. It's done, it's been very advantageous for our students. But again, our teachers are learning the curriculum and they're using it with fidelity. And I think down the road, we'll see, we'll see major gains with our students as they continue to benefit from this program. Again, our student outcomes are solid, even if we don't meet each of our goals. And our goals are designed to make us stretch. These aren't, these aren't something that's superfluous and something that we think are easily attainable. These are, these are truly our goals and we work hard to reach these goals. Social emotional learning is imperative for academic success. We know that kids who, number one, if kids don't feel comfortable within the building that they're in, they're not going to learn. If teachers don't feel like they have some connection to staff, they're not going to learn. If they don't feel like they've got that one important adult that really cares deeply about them, they're missing that opportunity for success. So that social emotional learning is huge for us. Again, relationships and connections with our students has a huge effect beyond something that can be measured. But again, it makes all the difference with both of our students and our families. And our parents see that. We do know that our snow days have a negative effect on our student achievement, but there isn't, we can't control the weather and we're not going to try to do that. My next job is not being a meteorologist. And it is what it is. We live in Minnesota. We're dealing with that. And I think that what we did in terms of our EA learning days, I thought was great. It caused our students to actually do some learning during those snow days. Had a lot of good feedback from parents on those. But I'll be happy if we don't have to have any this year. That would be very nice.
You and me both.
I know. Those get hard, especially when I'm not the one that has to make the call on those and that's not an easy call to make. So for our, the goals for this year, again, we're looking at 60% of our students to score at or above grade level benchmark in reading and math at, on the spring MAP. And that's for kindergarten. And that MAP is the measures of academic progress given with our NWEA assessments. First grade, we're looking at, again, MAP. The number of students meeting their fall to spring MAP target growth will be at 80% or higher in both reading and math. First grade just does a bang-up job of getting those kids ready to go. And they come in, many of them come in as non-readers. And our first grade team does an outstanding job of getting them to be readers by the time they're done. Second grade, 75% of students will score at or above grade level in reading on the spring STAR test. And that's part of our Renaissance learning package. And then 90% of the students will score an average of 80% or higher on the, this will be the Everyday Math, the fourth edition, on their unit post-test assessments. Third grade, we're looking for the students who, we're looking what their, when they take the MAP assessment, what MAP predicts, how successful they will be on their MCAs. And that's what we're looking for them to outperform their MAP predictor by more than 15% in reading and 10% in math. Fourth grade and fifth grade, we're looking at a similar goal of the number of students meeting or exceeding their MCA target score based on prior year skill score will be at 60% in reading and 65% in math. And then at fifth grade, the 55% and 65%. That's based on prior progress of those groups of students. Again, for our climate goals, each teacher completes the SABR's report. And this is based on social emotional learning. And we want to reduce the numbers of students identified as at risk. We want to reduce that by 5% from fall to spring. Also, as Joel was talking about, the STUDER parent survey, our lowest one for, on that survey was, again, I received positive phone calls, emails or notes about my child from school. So that is one we want to have 100% of parents receiving that positive information. And I will show you some of the things that we plan on using. When I talk about our PBIS tools, we spend a lot of time doing the PBIS training over these past two years. And so what we had talked about this summer was designing a postcard to be sent, a postcard that will be addressed with the child's name on it. And there will be two per student, one set, and the teachers can choose what's, which ones they want to use. And what's going to happen is there'll be one set that will be given directly to the teachers, one set that will be left in the office for people like our specialists or myself or our behavior coach or other people in the building that can, they can pick those out and fill those out and send those home. Again, pre-addressed so that we know, we know which students have not received theirs so we can get those done by the end of the year. And that's why I have 100% there, because our parents deserve that. When we take that time to make those phone calls home or send that little note home, I mean, it is, it is well worth our time. When I have a student come to my office and I'm able to pick up the phone right there and say, you know, I've got your son in my office right now and he's got a very good reason to be in my office. You know, this is what he's been doing on his reading. He has made such great gains. And you hear that parent say, I'm sitting here crying because I thought this was going to be a bad phone call. And, you know, and then you check in with the kid the next day and said, how was, how was your night at home last night? And he says, it was great. My mom and dad took me out. And, I mean, I don't know, I don't know who gains more in that, myself or the child, but it does pay dividends. And also to get those, get those, get the opportunity to call home when children have made gains within their behavior, within their learning. All those little different things, those make a big difference. So it was really nice to see that on the, in the STUDER results. But at the same time, this is something that is, it's actually fun to work on, but I can't wait till the staff come back and see their postcards and start working on those. And again, taking time at staff meetings to, you know, give staff that reminder on, you know, how are you coming with your postcards? Are you, are you looking, you know, you're tracking that? So you're going to, you can get that done within a short period of time. My prediction is we're going to have staff that will come back and say, can I have another stat? That would be a good problem to have. So we were really fortunate that Carlton printed our cards for us last week. So we got those back and we're all ready to go on that. And then strategies and assessments, obviously, we continue to support our PLCs so that they can support all of our learners. We use our student support team to intervene with students academically, socially and behaviorally. Obviously, we're going to use all the student achievement results that we have or any pieces of data to improve and inform our instruction. We want to continue our work with CCC. We had a large group of teachers back in June that went to another training up at Hamlin University on CCC, which, and then some of us administrators went as well. So we got our part of that, which I thought that was fantastic. And then again, building those partnerships with our parents and our community. We want to continue with our PBIS and the social emotional learning curriculum. We continue using MAP, our MCAs. Again, the measures of academic progress, the Minnesota Comprehensive Assessments, the Everyday Math, the fourth edition, our STAR assessment, which is given online, and our Common Assessment Data. Then coming up at the end of this month, on August 29th, we have a training coming up from Responsibility-Centered Discipline. And this is a training that would be done from, by Larry Thompson. All the teachers have their book, The Roadmap to Responsibility. A couple of the things that I would like to read out of the book is, it's time for schools, educators and administrators to shift the goal from making students behave to promoting responsibility. As opposed to adults wanting to change, change the way kids behave, it's about teaching the child to want to change their own behavior. A student who feels no weight of responsibility to change has no reason to come up with a solution. So again, teaching the kids why they should behave and giving them, giving them that, the tools they need to build their own, take responsibility for their own behavior. Larry talks about the give them five. And that whole piece is providing them support, giving them a statement that connects to your relationship with them or identifying a strength they have, laying out the expectations, letting the students know, this is what I expect from you. Breaking it down, telling them, you know, what have, what have you done, what have they done wrong or how they failed to meet the expectation? Giving them the benefit. How will, how will this change benefit the student? And then closure, determining whether the situation is resolved or if you feel comfortable moving ahead. So looking forward to Larry Thompson providing that training for our students. There is a small group of us who already attended Larry Thompson's first session and are looking forward to returning for the second part two later on in November as well. So really looking forward to that. I think it's going to dovetail quite well with what we're doing with our second step curriculum and also what we've done with Responsive Classroom. So, and it's been, it's been amazing to have teachers come tell you how well it works with their own children at home and how it works with other children in the neighborhood. So that's been fun to listen to them. But also I'm seeing really good tools that can be used not only, not only as a teacher but as a parent. So those are, those are nice to see. Even my daughter came home with a situation from the Y today. And I said, well, you know, have you thought about asking, asking him this and this question? And it's all Larry Thompson material. And she's like, well, I didn't think about asking that. And it's like, okay, good. Well, you know, try that next time because then he can see why, what benefit there is for him to change his ways. And why, it's not because you're being mean, it's because you expect more from that child. So to me, that's a, that's a huge piece. I'm really glad that we have the district support in bringing in Larry Thompson on August 29th. And then, bottom line is we educate children who want to be leaders for tomorrow. And what's your superpower? We got lots of them. So I would entertain any questions that you may have at this time.
Excellent presentation, Nancy. Thank you. Questions, comments for members half? Amy?
First, thank you for coming and I really love your enthusiasm for what you do. It really shines, so.
Thank you. I can't wait for day one. My favorite day of the year.
And all your talking about children with their expectations reminds me of something someone said to me years ago, which was, children live up or down to your expectations of them. And it's so true that you have to set the expectations and have them live up to them. So I am very happy to see that you're doing all of that. And I wish you all the best, meeting your goals for this next year.
Thank you so much.
Excellent. Thank you. Ellen?
So what I really appreciated about the school improvement plan is that each of the grades has this goal. So I feel like the teachers will, the instructional staff will know what the goals are. Like if you ask something about the site improvement plan, they would know what it was and it would be something meaningful. I'm curious, with Northville Forward has gone through and reviewed these in the past and how has, how has that shaped how you are kind of bringing yours together?
It helps us hone in on it. And also, one of the things that I, that I get from that is break it down, keep it simple. And don't make it as confusing. Sometimes you like to, you know, get the jargon so it's, you're more wordy or you use different vocabulary. To me, the best, the best feedback I had was, keep it simple. Keep it simple so that, so that someone who is reading it will understand it as opposed to just people who are in education understanding it. You bet. Thank you.
Other questions, comments?
I just had one question about the Responsibility-Centered Discipline training, which sounds really exciting. And you alluded to it being, will dovetail well and work well with Responsive Classroom and Second Step Social Emotional Learning, which was one of my questions in terms of introducing that. And then, you know, the success you've had with Fix-It Plans and have a small number of students on the Fix-It Plan. So I was wondering about, like, one thing we talked about, the Second Step is that district-wide, then, we have this common language and this sort of as the students move to middle school and beyond. And so how do you see that sort of working in conjunction with the other, you know, Second Step and your Fix-It Plan and Responsibility? You're saying it's working, but I'm just wanting to just delve into that a little bit more.
One of the, one of the big things is with Responsibility-Centered Discipline, One of the big things is, with Responsibility-Centered Discipline, it requires that you are talking directly with that child. And it's not a one-size-fits-all. Because in order for them to tell the student what, you know, what support you're giving them, and/or the benefit for them, you actually have to know that child. And that's why I think with both Second Step, it really gives them the skills that they need to solve, to do their own problem-solving. This then comes alongside the adult, the teacher, in helping give them the language to help that child make those, make the positive choices that you want them to make. And that's what I saw was the biggest piece that brought them together, was it's not a one-size-fits-all, but it's taking those pieces where, yes, you're looking at, you're looking at all the different skills that they've learned, but you can come back to, you know, when we learned in Second Step, that this is how we address someone that we disagree with, and you can see how, when you told Bobby this, that didn't really meet that goal. You know, "I know that you didn't want to hurt Bobby, but this is what I need to see from you." Because when you did this to Bobby, I could see his head dropped, and he looked like he was feeling badly. Okay, now, you know, knowing that you're a great person, you care about other people, now how can you handle that differently next time, so that you're not hurting someone's feelings, and yet you can disagree with someone?
Okay. Excellent. Thank you. And then just to touch on, you know, your commitment to the parent engagement as a result of the Studer work, I think that's, you know, we're hearing that now from all of the buildings coming forward, and understanding, and really getting a process in place for your staff to be able to do that. So thank you. And we know we'll reap great rewards, and we're really anxious to see those. And then lastly, I think we have to acknowledge the additional, you know, responsibility and effort on your half, on your end, to see the construction process first through, you know, we know Knutson and Wald have an absolutely wonderful plan. We're quite confident that it will go well, but there are those daily hiccups, and we know as principal of the building that a lot of that will come to you, and of course, Jim Kulsev and his team. But you're frontline, so we just want to acknowledge right away, and at this juncture, what that means for you, and the extra responsibility and effort that that will entail. But as Dr. Hillman has so rightly said, you know, put up with the rain to get the rainbow. And I think Amy talked about your positiveness, and we know that that will continue right through the construction process, and days when you might be gritting your teeth, but you're smiling at the same time.
Absolutely.
So thank you for that.
Well, thank you. I think it's going to be really nice to have that secure entrance. To me, that's the huge part for me, knowing that anyone who comes from under the building has to come through the office. So to me, keeping kids safe is my ultimate job, and when we have a project here that's going to do that, there is no greater gift than that.
Excellent. Thank you, Nancy.
And I'd like to thank Nancy for talking about all the acronyms that are in her presentation, because when you get to an elementary school, it's A, B, C, Z, Y, X, and all those kinds of things. And so I really appreciate you going through this. I think that that's inside-baseball for us, you know, who are working with them every day. We're actually working on an acronym dictionary for you, so that we can have that at the beginning of school improvement plans. We're looking at adding a slide in the school improvement plan piece and way forward that describes those key things, because if we spelled all of these things out, it would be 30 slides as opposed to the five or six. But Nancy took special care to make sure she tried to explain each one tonight, so thank you for doing that.
The only one I didn't have the true definition for is the STAR report, so sorry, I missed one.
STAR just sounds really good anyways.
It sounds great. And, you know, we're all stars, so...
Thank you, Nancy.
Thank you very much.
So we've had various wonderful reports this evening, but we are, it is, you know, we're rather late into the evening, and I'd just like to ask the board if we could entertain approving the Greenville bid at this point as an item for individual action, just to acknowledge that Sal Bagley and Josh Cooper have been so patient, and it is getting quite late. So if we could move that, I think that would be good. So just flipping forward to our item for individual action, what we're asking for as was presented in the item for discussion by the Representative Sal Bagley from Wald and Josh Cooper from Knutson, the bids on the Greenville Building, so that we can move forward with them, moving forward with the project. So as this is an item for individual action, is there a motion to allow contracts to be issued to the bidders presented for the new Greenville Park Elementary School at a cost of $21,322,129, those bids as presented? A motion moved by Amy. Is there a second? Second by Tom. So questions or comments for either Sal or Josh? Dr. Hillman?
I think we want to point out that the construction bids came in $690,000 less than what we had projected. Now, there are, as Josh said, there were a couple of bid packages that we did not have any bids on, but one of them, we chose to go with the terrazzo instead of the polished concrete. We didn't get a bid for the polished concrete. That's okay, because we were selecting the alternate for the terrazzo because of its durability. And then signage, we're 0-for-2 in getting people to bid on signage, but typically that's a pretty low-cost piece in the scheme of things. So that's something we can do some direct negotiation with as we move forward. But I want to emphasize what Josh said, 102 bids over 37 different bid packages, lot of great traffic. The auditorium, I thought, was pretty full on bid opening day, and this is just a huge step, again, in terms of, we thank the public for their confidence in us by approving this referendum with 63% of the vote, and we intend to continue to deliver on our promises that we made during that campaign in Wald and Knutson, if it helped us. This is a momentous piece, because this gets the ball rolling over at Greenville Park.
Yes, this is really excellent. Other questions or comments? You know, I just want to add too, as well, all of the great work that's done upfront, so that we are at this spot, and we're not looking at having to, you know, be in a situation where the bids are coming in higher than the construction costs that we had in the referendum. So thank you for that great work. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The trust's rolling.
We thought we looked at you, and we probably have another 15 or 20 minutes of presentation, so we wanted you to get home at a reasonable hour.
We appreciate that.
Yes, thank you.
And congratulations.
Yes, excellent. Good, thanks. Okay, so then let's go back to two additional items for discussion and report. The next one, Dr. Hillman, you're presenting the 2019-20E Learning Plan Update. You had presented one to the board in June.
Yes, so I just wanted to bring this back to your attention, as we are obviously gearing up for the school year. We know that we had planned to pilot eLearning Days in 2018-19, and I think we can all agree that we had a case study as opposed to a pilot. We learned quite a bit last year through a number of different feedback loops, a parent's survey, a staff survey, a student's survey. Then also, we utilized our high school statistics class, who did a randomized sample survey of parents, to be able to give us some additional feedback about our eLearning Days this year, which we called Flexible Learning Days last year. We're changing the terminology, because we've been using the word flexible for nearly everything, and we want to align with the state law. So the state law talks about eLearning Days. We want to use that same terms that people do not get confused, you know, when we're talking about what is an eLearning Day. So you're going to notice where we used to use the word flexible learning days, we're now using eLearning Days. I think most of the plan is similar to what we did last year, because we had a lot of positive feedback, but we also have learned quite a bit in terms of these different and various ways, including a number of face-to-face meetings that I've had with parents who had some specific suggestions for improvement. So just to highlight the key things would be that the first two cancellations due to winter weather will not be replaced with an eLearning Day, just as we've done for a number of years, the first two snow days are traditional Minnesota snow days that we know that bring joy to at least students everywhere, not always to the adults, but that's okay. We wanted to continue with that, so the first two will not be replaced with an eLearning Day. The third and subsequent closures would be replaced with an eLearning Day. One thing we will do differently this year is, for the first time, that I talked to several people who have been townies and who have lived here, no one remembers ever having to have closed four days in a row, just unheard of, right? If you think about during that polar vortex time, we had that issue. The first two days were not, right, eLearning Days, and the second two were, we had it happen twice, where we had two eLearning Days in a row. One of the things that we learned is that two in a row is probably not the best strategy. So in that case, if we did have two in a row, the first of those two days would be an eLearning Day counted toward the state's five days that's allowed. The second day, if it was too consecutive, there would not be any new assignments posted. We would not count it in the state system as an eLearning Day, but because we have so many days built in above the state minimum, that second day would be an extension of the first eLearning Day. So it would be an opportunity for students to either continue to work on those assignments if needed, to be able to interact. Their teachers would still be available online, as if it were an official day, would just be, there would be no new assignments. And that's intended not to continue to add up the different assignments over a couple of days, and to make sure that we have some opportunity to get back face-to-face before there are new assignments. So that's important for people to know. In addition, the key thing would be that this year, we had one circumstance where there was a two-hour late start, that unfortunately, the forecasters were just not right, and it continued to snow harder than what they had predicted, and so we had to make a late decision to close. Something I will tell you, of all the decisions to make, it's the one that we want to make the least. The only one's probably, we don't like closing early. That's probably the worst decision to make, because parents are obviously, you know, at work or things and trying to get back in time. But having to cancel a two-hour late later, or closer to the start time, is something we try to avoid. We just couldn't do anything about it that day, but it was too close to be able to say, "We can take this to an eLearning Day." So what you'll see is, we've moved the posting of the assignments time from 9:00 AM to 9:30 AM, because that would coincide, that if we do shift from a two-hour late start to a closure, that we would still have enough time for teachers to be able to post the assignments and those kinds of things. And so that's, the next change would be that the assignments would be posted at 9:30, by 9:30 AM. Staff would be then available from 9:30 to 12:00, and then from 12:30 until 3:30 PM. And then you'll also notice that the staff directory includes all district email addresses and voicemail extensions. If I don't, if I need to talk to my teacher, I'd like to talk with them. We have assigned every teacher an opportunity to be able to create a Google Voice number, so that they're not using their home phone or their personal cell phone. They can find, what happens is, when someone calls the school, they can leave their teacher a direct message. And then what will happen is, the teacher can call back, you know, via the Google Voice number. And so that's the opportunity for the non-digital way of interacting. So that's another minor change. We actually made that change mid-year this year, as that's something that we wanted to make sure was available. You will also see that we're going to do something a little bit different with attendance. So when we're trying to think about this, we're saying, "How does this look just like a regular day?" And so what will happen is, for various reasons, there could be a student who is too sick to engage in the online environment that day. It could be that they are responsible for some younger siblings, and they're supervision on a snow day. A parent can call in and say, "My student was absent today." And so even though it was a digital day, parents can report an absence just like they would on any other day, and if they're not, you know, put into the system as absent, they'll be considered to be here and working through the assignments. The other piece that we learned was that we had this thought of accountability, if you will. So having an assignment that needed to be turned in for each eLearning Day, that was the wrong thing to do. It was great when you're talking about it in a conference room in August, not so great when it worked out, because the goal is to bridge instruction, right? And we don't want teachers to have to make up an assignment if they didn't plan to have students turn in an assignment on the eLearning Day. We want them to continue, if it was a piece of reading, if it was watching a video and reacting, there are ways that we can do that in an online environment. But as we all know, not every worthwhile activity requires grading. And so we're leaving that to teacher discretion. If they had planned to have an assignment that day that was going to be submitted, that's what will happen. If they did not, there will not be a graded submission that day. And again, that is going back and trusting our teaching staff to know their curriculum and their pacing, and to be able to make those decisions appropriately. So I think those are the real highlights. We will be continuing with the online activity matrices for the elementary school students. We will have multiple ones of those developed before the beginning of the year. We thought, "Oh, we'll have plenty," and, well, we all know what happened, so our teachers really responded and created some on the fly, which were very high-quality, but we're going to have those in place before we start the school year, at least before the snow flies. I think those are the major changes from what you had seen last year. The only other one I want to point out is that we had given a number of days, three days, I believe it was, last year, to turn in any assignments after the eLearning Day. And that was done from a perspective of trying to make sure that we are giving students who might not have access to the Internet the opportunity to submit that assignment if they needed to come back to school to get access to the digital resources. What we learned is, the students who did not have access to the Internet was not, they were able to adapt and work through it. Where we saw was, we had some students who did not turn in the assignments, who just, basically, they just procrastinated. And so they were not students who did not have access to the Internet, but it was actually quite a normal teenage behavior. And so what we want is, we want those assignments to be due the next day, and what we're going to be talking with students about, as we practice this in October or so, is that if you have a need to have an extension, do it just like anything else. You talk with your teacher, and we're talking with our staff members about demonstrating grace when someone asks them for an extension for one of these eLearning assignments. So rather than trying to have this catch-up a couple of days later, keep the learning going, that's the goal. If there are specific situations where there is an extension that is needed, we will provide that on a case-by-case basis, if that makes sense. The final thing I just want to point out is that one of the things we're going to do to support special education students is that special education students can expect that their case manager will be checking in with them and/or their parent, you know, during that day to make sure that they have the support that they need to complete the eLearning goals for the day. And so that's something, again, that we learned toward the end of last year's case study, and frankly, when we talked with a lot of other schools, they had the same issue. So again, special education case managers checking in with their people, similar to what I would do with a class, and so that's the strategy that we're going to use there. So those are the major changes. We are not required to ask the board to approve this, it's not a requirement, but I do, I would, I'm going to bring it back to you to approve it at the next meeting, just because I want to make sure that we've gone through a process that you can feel good about. I know that I've gotten great feedback from the board about the way that we handled our eLearning Days last year, but it's rare that we have a plan like this that changes the way that we do instruction, that we don't ask you, that's our loophole decision. Of course, the law does not require it, but I think that it's just a healthy thing for you to say, "Yes, this is an appropriate direction for the district, and these details are successful for this time." It doesn't mean we can't change it, again, but we think that we are getting closer to making this a real, truly engaging way of bridging weather. And again, as soon as we have this in place, hopefully, we will have no snow days this year, but we are prepared.
Excellent. Okay, so questions, comments? I, let's see, I had one, two comments. One, I think that in many ways, we're very grateful for the case study, because we have really shored up a lot of areas that really make it a sound plan. And secondly, communication to parents. I know in June, we changed the schedule, the calendar, so it no longer reflects the makeup days, if parents look at that and feel like, "Oh, I can't potentially leave on June 8th, but now I can." But overall, communication to parents at this juncture, in terms of what they could expect, and then, of course, obviously, closer, I would imagine, to the actual, actual winter season, if we could ever predict when that's going to start. Could be September, could be January. And I hope I didn't just change that by saying that. But just wanting, just that overall sense of how parents will, I mean, certainly, they know that, what we did last year, but maybe just reiterating to them some of the aspects of eLearning Days.
So a couple of different things there. One, I agree that the calendar was changed to reflect the eLearning piece, and talked about referring to the eLearning Plan, which is, will be posted on our website. In addition, we've added the language about eLearning Days in all of the student handbooks. So the handbooks that you have approved all had something about that. Again, we know not everyone reads those word-for-word, but again, that's another place, that is a communication tool that people are expected to read, so that is part of it. And then the next component of it will be that, as we come back to school, I know that principals will be highlighting that. In October, different buildings are looking at different ways to train people how to do this. So we're not going to assume that people know how to do it. We know that there's plans. I know that middle school has a very detailed plan about how they are going to specifically teach their students, "How do I learn on an eLearning Day?" So that's another piece. And then I will be rerecording my 800-some-view YouTube video, talking about how we close school. And so, you know, that video, we usually send out right at the end of the first quarter, at the beginning of the traditional snow season, not the climate change-induced snow season. of the traditional snow season, not the climate change-induced snow season. But the fact is that that video is something we share with people. We explain, here are the process that we use to make decisions to close school. We talk about all of the different things that we do, and we will update that video to include the e-learning piece. So our goal is to meter that out several points over the year.
Okay, excellent. All right, so we will formally approve this at our August 23rd, is it?
Twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth board meeting. Okay, excellent, thank you. All right, so our last item for discussion is the Policy 713 Student Activity Accounting that we are now required to do. So Val, you're going to give us a brief highlight of that?
Sure, very brief. So a couple of meetings ago, I talked briefly about the GASV-84, and the board approved a resolution basically authorizing moving the student activity funds into the general fund. So this policy is really just guiding that process now that they're in the general fund and they'll be intermingled with co-curricular and obviously in separate account codes and all tracked the way it needs to be, but just a policy to help govern how they are different than co-curricular and the things that we can and cannot do in each of those groups. So it's fairly straightforward, just defining really what the activities are. The procedures won't change significantly from what we're already doing. So it's just a formality that MSBA is recommending.
Sure. And we are using the, this is brand-new, so we are relying on the MSBA Policy Services, the Minnesota School Boards Association Policy Services. I think as most people are adopting this initial policy, we are using the same language to align with what the Minnesota School Board Association lawyers have determined aligns with the new law.
Questions, comments? I had a couple of questions. Oh, I'm sorry, Ellen, did you have a question? Okay, so I had a couple of questions. So when you said, we were talking about the general fund, so will each activity have its own separate account code? So each co-curricular and/or activity, so knowledgeable would have an account code?
So we're going to go a little bit in the weeds with this one. So they already do have their own accounts. The, I have, I've been working with the high school administration to clean up the student activities, to define what we really want to truly operate as a student activity as defined right now.
Okay.
So we're scaling it down pretty significantly from what we currently have. So football has a student activity and a general fund activity account. So they have two right now. We're just merging them into one. What that effectively means is they won't be able to carry over their balance like they could in a student activity. But the philosophy behind the student activity account is really money raised by the students used for the students. And so if the students that fundraised it are going to benefit directly, they have to spend it in that year anyway. So really, I think it aligns better. It'll be simpler accounting and paperwork for those managing those accounts. So our actual true student activity accounts that will be in the general fund will be probably five or 10 accounts now. We currently have close to 50.
Oh, wow.
So we...
Yeah, so that's an advantage, for sure.
Yep, so we spent quite a bit of time meeting about that and talking about the pros and cons of those options, and that's where we landed.
Okay.
So, so yes, they will have their own accounts. The ones that are true student activities have actually a separate closing fund balance account, so they'll actually be separately stated in the actual audit. You'll see a line balance that says student activity balance. So that's a little more nitty-gritty than...
No, I know it's a bit unwieldy, so that's why I was trying to under this new process, how that would work. And then my last question is, prior students had to sign off on expenditures, et cetera. So is that continuing? Or students, because I know the principal seems like they're controlling...
That's one of the positives of just moving it to the general fund, is it's not required because it won't be truly like a student activity as defined here.
Oh, sure.
Certainly, the fundraised amounts, we would, they still obviously are in consultation with the students about how they want to spend it, but we're actually revamping that process as well so that they're going to be fundraising for a specific goal versus just fundraising to fundraise.
Okay.
So that's in the works as well. Lots of things changing with this process, but yeah, so that's part of the, by kind of merging them, that's one of the perks to help offset the carryover piece.
Well, thank you for working through all those details, like, you know, it's always the devil is in the details, for sure. So thank you. So then we will come back and approve this then at our August 26th board meeting.
Yep, the only thing that I will point out, we left the policy as-is. It does say that we would report on fundraisers semi-annually. The current board policy does say annually, so that's really your preference on how often you would want that report. I will present it as often as you need, so.
Okay, okay. We'll work through that. Okay, thank you. So our next item, I think that is it, yes, that is it for items for discussion and reports. So we are at a point we can move on to approval of the consent grouping. There was just one sheet in our packet of some additional personnel items. Is there anything, or I'm sorry, table file, is there anything anyone would like to pull from the consent grouping? Is there a motion to approve the consent grouping? Moved by Ellen. Is there a second? Second by Amy. All those in favor of approving the consent grouping, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So with that, we move on for items for, move on to items for individual action. As you know, we did approve the Greenville item, so we will move on to the second item for individual action, which is the approval of Policy 902, Use of School District Facilities and Equipment, which Director of Community Services Erin Bailey presented at our July 8th board meeting. So if there's a motion, we can ask any questions of Director Bailey once we have a motion on the table. So is there a motion to approve the changes to Policy 902, Use of School District Facilities and Equipment as Presented? Moved by Jeff. Is there a second? Second by Ellen. Questions, comments board members have on this policy?
And I'd just like Erin to review the timeline for the implementation. There's some changes in fees, and I just want Erin to review that of the thoughtfulness that's gone into the change in this policy.
So the timeline for implementation is that what is approved tonight would not go into effect until July 1, 2020. As you know, through this process, we did have met with some of our largest facility users, so just to lay out and gather their thoughts from what we were looking at implementing, changing. So some of those groups are already aware. We will also, with the approval, send a letter to anyone who has used our facility in the last year, in the next month, letting them know about the changes that we will be seeing on July 1, 2020, so that they have almost a year to plan for those changes and any costs that those would incur to their programs.
Yes, Ellen?
So I just, a point of clarification, so comparing this to what we had for the first read, the only changes really are the church being added and then the clarification that Board Chair Pritchard had made about softball. The clarifications for the varsity, so we did add the varsity softball as one of those, and then we just clarified, because in practice, we have been renting the varsity softball and baseball fields really to those associations. So again, we will, that is the practice, and to be honest, those coaches are working with the varsity coaches, so they know that this is happening. So just cleaned it up to continue the practice that we are currently using.
Other questions, comments? I just want to add to what, oh, I'm sorry, Amy.
A couple of questions. Remind me how the energy fee works in the matrix that you have? Does everybody get charged the energy fee or just the class to Sibley?
So everyone does get charged the energy fee. What is changing is that energy fee will be charged for every hour versus where it was charged after the first two hours of use. So the change is happening that it will be implemented every hour of use, starting in, on July 1, 2020.
So should it go across the matrix then? Or is it just, it's listed only under class 2? That's what I...
Sure. I think I know what you're...
I think it's actually on everyone.
I think it is 2, I think it's not...
Maybe it didn't print on mine that way. Well, it's just something to look at.
I will look at that so that it is clear. I will make sure it's clear. I think it, in the tri-fold, it is 2, but I will make sure to look at that so that it is clear that it's on for every class.
Yeah, because I was a little confused.
Yep, absolutely.
That would be great.
I think it's a minor, non, you know, minor technical change that, yeah.
Right, yeah, it's not, it's still worth voting on tonight, but I just...
Good catch.
And then the, number 14, it says, all requests for facility use must be made at least two weeks in advance. Does that include the school district request for facility use?
So we, I mean, certainly, things change. So no, we take school district uses as they come in, absolutely. And like, for an example, since snow days are a popular topic tonight, that causes things that cannot provide two weeks of notice for us. So there is certainly some flex. We do, that is really a policy for outside user groups because we have to provide custodial coverage, notify buildings, notify spaces that they will be in. But school district, they also, many in the school district have the ability to reserve the spaces they need to, and then it's just an approval on our department's end.
Yeah, I think the important part is the policy really governs external users. Internal users, it is, you know, it's inferred that, you know, we are using the space, so we don't, obviously, internal users don't pay the fees, they don't, you know. So this is really intended for people outside of the...
And that's what I was assuming, but it's not absolutely clear. But I think you have, it doesn't matter because you're deciding on a case-by-case basis.
And it might be, it does list internal users in there in the ranking so that it is clear the priority that people get to ranking. So, in priority of which they get to schedule, which is why internal users do show up in the policy.
Good questions.
Other questions or comments?
I just want to make a comment and thank Erin so much because, you know, we know our facilities are an important community resource, and yet, we, you know, we have to be mindful of being good stewards of our facilities. And you just, the process was excellent, really getting feedback from stakeholders, and I think really holding the increases until a year from now and being really intentional about understanding and the planning process that many of our groups need to have in order to really be able to make the fees work for them. So thank you so much for the really excellent process, and this is an unwieldy thing to tackle. And so no surprise that you did a stellar job. So thank you for that. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, those are our last items for individual actions. So now we go on to items for information and a fun construction update, number 11. Dr. Hillman.
Yeah, so I think that most of the construction update happened with our friends from Old and Canute's. And what you'll notice that we modified the format of this a little bit so that the newest reports will always be at the top, as opposed to you have to scroll on through the pages. So thanks for Anita, to Anita Ozzy for putting that together. We also added a project overview at the top that will remain throughout, that will stay there always, so that you are seeing what the estimated project cost, what the expected start date and the expected completion date was, so that that is front and center for you, and to give you the opportunity, if people ask in the community what's going on, you know, that you have that information at your fingertips. I do really want to emphasize that we are updating the construction updates page weekly. We are now going with the In the Loop, it's called In the Loop, little newsletter from Canute's and Construction. And so we receive one of those usually every Thursday or Friday. Anita or I will post that to the site. Then we will actually, just the way the system works, we will update the date that that looks like it was posted, so it includes everything in one spot, as opposed to you having to go through multiple posts. So we're working to get that part done. And so I don't think we've gotten last week's up quite yet, but we'll have that up, you know, tomorrow or the next day. So weekly, we're posting those. So if people really want information, northfieldschools.org/construction, pretty easy to remember. It's got the link to the Bridgewater camera, it will have the link to the Greenville Park and to the Sibley cameras. It has the links to all of the previous construction updates and from, that we have produced for you here, and it will also have all of the In the Loops there as well. So people can go back and look at the whole history of it. And really, so far, I think we should all be very pleased with where we're at. Just what a thrill to be where we are at with the construction bids, you know, with the new Greenville Park coming in under what we had anticipated. The total project costs are a thing that we're still, Project Overstate Committee is still working through to make sure that we're dead on, but we're very close, and we're very confident that we are hitting our marks. So thanks to everyone for your work and for helping us get to this point. So really, a great, another step forward for us.
Excellent. Any questions, Dr. Hillman, on that update? Next is the back-to-school breakfast. Wow, we're talking about back-to-school breakfast and program. Dr. Hillman?
Yes, so what you'll see is that on August 26th, this will be the fourth year that we've had the all-school breakfast and beginning-of-the-year celebration program. Breakfast will begin to be served at 7:00 a.m. All board members are invited to participate. If you want to come for breakfast, we, you know, we, our administrative team does serve breakfast, if that's something that you have an interest in helping out with, either welcoming people as they come in. We will have our red carpet back again this year. How people are welcomed is important. And so if you are able to make that breakfast, if you can make it, that's great, just to be there with people. I also want to make sure that you are also invited to participate in the whole morning program, which will go through right around 11:15 or 11:30. We will be honoring our Years of Service plaque members. We do a little bit of fun drawing and give some prizes away that community members have donated. And then in addition, I think one of the really important things that I want to share with you is that we are having a really great presentation, what I anticipate to be a great presentation from a group called the Equity Alliance of Minnesota. And what we're really looking at is to increase our cultural proficiency within the school district, including beginning to have us understand more deeply the impact of implicit bias in our educational system. And so this will be a couple of hour presentation. The Equity Alliance of Minnesota has excellent reviews. I've talked with other districts that they work with. I have seen them present myself and give them very high marks. We have always been a community that has strived to be welcoming and caring specifically for those demographic groups who have traditionally been marginalized. Northfield has always wanted to make sure we are a welcoming place and that we care for those who have been traditionally on the margins of society. And what we need to do is we just, I believe we can and need to do more and need to increase our ability to be culturally proficient in how we work with our students and how we work with our parents. Because really, if we seriously mean that we are here for every student, if we really mean that, we have more work to do. And it isn't an indictment of where we are at right now, it is simply an acknowledgement that we have room to grow and that we can serve every student probably a little bit differently and better. So this is not a one-shot deal in terms of this kind of presentation. It is going to be something that we are going to be talking. We have every staff member in the district, custodians, teachers, administrators, district office personnel, everyone is there. And so it's one of the only times of the year that we can provide this kind of training for everyone. And it means everyone, because everyone who works in the district has an opportunity to interact with students and has an opportunity to interact with the community. And we need to grow our cultural proficiency skills. This is a step in that direction. We have a lot more work to go, work to do. We are also bringing the Equity Alliance of Minnesota back in mid-September to give the same training to anyone in the community who is interested, specifically looking at our parents, right, so that they get the same exact presentation that our staff got. We need to let people get their kids through the first couple of weeks of school, right, but then inviting people to come in. This is very important to our success as a school system. And what we know, we, as you know, that we have struggled to close the persistent achievement gap. And the things that we've been doing have been good, we've been, continue to focus on really important outcomes, but there are some relationship pieces and some things about how we need to understand how all of our, how of our cultural differences can be leveraged as strengths. But we have to acknowledge those differences to start with, acknowledge some of our own issues in order to truly serve students who we look at, those demographic groups where they have, there is a persistent achievement gap. And so we need to get at the heart before we can get at the mind. And so this is the next step that we will be doing, and so I invite you to come to that presentation. I think you will be very impressed with the work, and this is going to be something we'll be continuing to talk about. This isn't a one-and-done or a one-year kind of thing. It is a journey that's going to take us a long time. But we need, we need to acknowledge where we're at and just be intentional about moving forward. I think in the past, we've allowed it to be accidental in nature, and this is going to be a much more intentional approach. So I really encourage you, actually, as a school board, if you are able to attend to hear that, that would be, I would really welcome that. So again, back to school, a little bit more than just to get in for information, but I want you to be aware of this very important presentation coming up.
Excellent. Questions or comments on that? And then an announcement about the national merit reception?
National merit reception, now November. So I believe we're looking at November 12th. Am I have that correct?
Yeah, excellent. So thank you for, board members are able to get that on our calendar.
And that's all Anita. That's, we got, you know, Anita's looking several months out to make sure we're all organized, so thanks to Anita.
And just as a note as well, we, our regular board meeting will be that night, Tuesday,